Good evening and welcome. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. We'll start with an invocation from Pastor David Jackson with the Hilltop Church. Pastor.
Well, first let me say, because I never talk, but thank you guys for all that you do. Thank you for what you do in the city. Appreciate it. Thanks for volunteering your time. And maybe it goes unsaid, but thank you. Let's have a word of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness. We pray that you pour your grace upon Havasu, on our city officials, on employees, Lord, those who strive to make this city the best city it can be. Lord, we pray that you pour your grace upon the citizens, that we learn to stand together and represent you, Jesus, and let Havasu be an incredible example to our whole world, the whole United States, Lord. And may you be a blessing. Bless our council members. Let them stand in unity. Bless their lives. Bless their families, Lord, and may you be glorified in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. We'll now have a pledge of allegiance, but I'm going to just introduce the folks that are going to be doing it. The world finals champions from the Havasu Champions, those folks that call Lake Havasu City home, that won in the world finals for the IJASBA World Jeski Finals. So we're so excited to have them. Thank you to Councilmember Moses and Ron Benfield for putting this together. But we have Ty Smith, Travis Billings, Sadie Mur, Ryder Wildabauer, Patrick Parker, Jack Cobb, Lucas Sovera, Britton Reinhardt, and Alan Weiss. If you please make your way to the podium. Before we get started, if you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll come around and take some photos.
You want to have one go to the mic? Yeah. You want to go to the microphone and...
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you. And again, these are the world finals that call Lake Havasu City home. We're so proud of you. Lake Havasu truly is where champions are made. And students, if you want to stay up here, we're going to come around and take some photos. So come back up to the dais where we started with originally. Me and my colleagues are going to come around and we'll take some photos.
All right, one more. Sorry, guys. Two, three. Perfect. All right. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Vice Mayor Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for a separate discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Koch?
Motion.
Please.
To approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Moses. We are ready to vote. Thank you. Item six on our agenda is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Starting with item 6.1, announce the vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, this item is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. There is currently one vacancy on the Board of Adjustment, an alternate member. If anyone's interested, they could pick up a packet, an application at City Hall, and also on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is our City Managers' Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Happy Tuesday. Lots to share this evening, starting off with a very special recognition that took place just last week. Congratulations to you, Mayor. You are the fourth individual that's been recognized by the Marine Corps League as an honorary member for your outstanding dedication and continued support of veterans in Lake Havasu City. Mayor Sheehy is one of four to receive this distinguished honor, which I believe was Dub Campbell, Mitch Claly, former Mayor Mark Nixon, and now Mayor Sheehy has received this honor. Of course, this honor reflects your deep commitment to those who have served our country and the veteran community here in Lake Havasu City. Congratulations. Fire Chief Pete Palaus and Police Officer Jason Nutt visited Vice Mayor Michelle Lynn's first grade class at Havasu Preparatory Academy. They read to students in celebration of Community Worker Day. Their participation gave the students a special opportunity to learn about the important roles of our first responders as they play a key role in keeping our community safe. Those are some fun pictures. Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor, City Council, members of the Havasu Youth Advisory Council, and City staff, we proudly represented Lake Havasu City this past weekend in the 54th Annual London Bridge Days Parade. It was a successful and enjoyable event to be part of, and I'd like to personally congratulate Golay Havasu and DSM Events for coordinating a fantastic parade. It's been a handoff, if you will, from previous years with London Bridge Parade, and this was the first year that Golay Havasu and DSM coordinated and organized the parade. Eighty-nine entries this year, which is far more than we've received in previous years. So thank you so much to everybody involved on that side. And a huge shout out to our Parks and Recreation Team for earning second place for their float. Lake Havasu City proudly honors our first responders, including our public works professionals, firefighters, police officers, EMTs, 911 operators, and of course, our paramedics for their courage, dedication, and service. These men and women stand on the front lines during emergencies, often risking their own safety to protect our community. So today is First Responders' Day, and in recognition of their valuable contributions, Mayor Sheehy proclaimed today, October 28th, 2025, as National First Responders' Day in Lake Havasu City. Notably, as of 2019, the U.S. Senate officially recognized public works professionals as first responders, acknowledging their critical role in maintaining the safety, functionality, and resilience in our community. On October 23rd, the Young Adult Development Association of Havasu, otherwise known as YADA, hosted the Seventh Annual Walk Away From Drugs Event at Rotary Park. The community gathered to promote drug awareness, prevention, and health lifestyle choices. The event featured opening remarks, resource boosts, and a community walk along the channel. Lake Havasu City is proud to support this event each and every year, bringing residents, our youth, our local organizations, all together in an effort to build a drug-free community. Thank you, YADA. A proclamation was signed by Mayor Sheehy, recognizing November as National Care at Home Month, honoring the dedicated professionals who provide home health, hospice, and palliative care in our community. This recognition highlights the compassionate services these caregivers offer to our residents and our families, ensuring comfort, dignity, and quality of life for those in need during their most time that they need these types of services. So thank you to all these facilities and all these hardworking individuals in our community. In recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Mayor Sheehy, Councilmember Jenny Koch, and City staff join the community for an annual walk to raise awareness and show support for survivors. City staff also participated in Purple Shirt Thursday, wearing purple to stand in solidarity with those affected by domestic violence and promote prevention, education, and support throughout Lake Havasu City. So much happening with our community and all these great, great efforts. So I'm proud to be a part of all this. A reminder, the city is hosting two in-person open houses for the 2026 General Plan Update. It'll take place at the Lake Havasu City Branch at our county library, taking place in our community rooms. So on Wednesday, October 29th, from 1:30 to 3:30, and on Thursday, October 30th, from 11:30 to 1:30, please drop in and review and provide some feedback on goals, statements, and future land use areas. Attendants can also enter a drawing for two fall gift baskets. A virtual workshop with the same activities will also be available on October 31st through November 23rd, and that'll take place through the city's website. So just look for that link. Lots of community engagement and more to come, so please participate. Mayor Sheehy, Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, Jenny Koch, David Diaz, and City staff attended the 2025 Transportation Policy Summit in Sierra Vista, hosted by the Sierra Vista MPO, focused on highways to hyperspace. The summit highlighted innovative infrastructure, connected systems, sustainability, mobility, and future-ready transportation planning. And we'd like to invite the community to a farewell tree ceremony honoring the historic holiday tree at Wheeler Park on Wednesday, November 5th at 10:00 AM. So please come and join us. This tree was planted in 1979 and has been a symbol of hope, generosity, and community spirit for more than 40 years. As it reaches the end of its life, the residents are invited to celebrate its legacy and hear about next steps as we start a new tradition. The 25-year-old time capsule sealed by Keep Havasu Beautiful Committee in January of 2000 was recently unearthed from the North Gateway Welcome to Lake Havasu City Monument. Contributions included letters, keepsakes, and memorabilia from local families, schools, and community organizations, which all remain sealed and unopened. Thank you to Keep Havasu Beautiful and the Chamber for including us in the activity, as we invite the public to join at a special edition of Coffee with the Mayor and City Manager. It'll take place this Friday on October 31st at 8:30 AM here in the council chambers. And at that time, we're going to invite everybody that participated in the time capsule 25 years ago to come to the event and unseal the contents of the time capsules, and if we're fortunate enough to share with the public on what's in those containers. The event will be live on the city's Facebook page for those unable to attend in person. And a special thank you to River Scene Magazine for the use of the photographs. We have a reminder that on November 11th, there will not be a city council meeting that is in honor of Veterans Day. So it happens to be on November 11th. So keep note of that. And then finally, Vice Mayor Lynn is going to talk to us about one of our treasures in Lake Havasu City. So let's hear what, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lynn has to say.
Hi, I'm Vice Mayor Michelle Lynn, and I'm standing at one of our newer local parks called Cypress Park, located at 301 Cypress Drive. Did you know this park was designed with flexibility in mind? It features two soccer fields, one of which can be divided into smaller fields to accommodate more games and activities. Cypress Park provides space for both organized sports and family fun. You'll also find a playground, a walking path, shaded picnic areas, and restroom facilities here, making it a great spot for everyone to enjoy. Cypress Park is all about fun, fitness, and community. We invite you to come out and experience it for yourself.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lynn, for sharing that with us, and a reminder of how great Cypress Park is for our community. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. During each of the next eight items will be a public hearing. We will have an introduction of the item. We'll then open up the public hearing for any public input or feedback. If you are here for one of the items, we encourage you to speak on that item when it comes up, so we can have a two-way conversation. If you, at the end of the meeting, there will be a call to the public where any citizen can address the council on any item within the jurisdiction of our community, but we can't have a two-way conversation at that time. So we encourage you to participate during the public hearing process. Item 7.1 is what we'll start with, and it's Ordinance Number 25-1370, amending City Code Chapter 12.08 Building Codes to Adopt Designated Updated Editions of Published Building Codes Declaring as Public Records the Local Amendments to the Published Building Codes and Adopting Local Amendments by Reference. Mr. Blake.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Stephen Blake, building official here for the city. Before you is discussion in action to consider the adoption of the ordinance amending the city code to adopt the designated updated editions of the published building codes declaring as public records the local amendments to the published building codes and adopting the local amendments by reference. Staff introduced this ordinance at the October 14th, 2025 regular council meeting. Lake Havasu City adopts various international and national building codes, supplements them with local amendments to address community-specific needs. These codes and amendments are adopted by reference, which requires the amendment documents to be declared a public record. Lake Havasu City currently operates under the 2018 International Codes and is proposing to adopt the 2024 addition with local amendments. This update will align the city with current construction standards and maintain consistency with industry practices. The city proposes to adopt the 2024 Family of I codes, which also includes the International Fire Code, which the fire marshal will be discussing later. Adoption of the updated published codes with local amendments will ensure the current safety regulations are being followed and updated technology is being utilized. In addition, the community could benefit from a positive financial impact on insurance rates by maintaining a favorable ISO rating. City values the community's input on the proposed adoption of updated published codes with local amendments. Outreach efforts included notices in the newspapers, social media, the city website, and through the Chamber Building Industry Alliance. The Building Division posted the proposed amendments on the city's website for two-week public comment period, during which no feedback was received. The city staff has reviewed the code changes and found very few changes to the code. Therefore, there were no major local amendments. Our recommendation, following the adoption, the building community will be informed of key changes from the current codes and the implementation process. To support a smooth transition, staff proposes a phased integration of the 2024 code adoption. Customers may continue submitting plans based on the 2018 standards for up to 90 days following the effective date. We are going to follow the same process that we did in 2021, which seemed to be smooth and seamless. The staff recommends that setting an effective date of February 1st, 2026. This concludes my presentation. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Are there questions from members of the council for Mr. Blake on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? If so, just make your way to the podium. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, I moved to adopt ordinance number 25-1370, amending city code chapter 12.08 Building Codes to Adopt Designated Updated Editions of Published Building Codes Declaring as Public Records the Local Amendments to the Published Building Codes and Adopting the Local Amendments by Reference.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is Ordinance Number 25-1371, amending city code chapter 12.12.010, adoption of International Fire Code to Adopt the 2024 Edition of the International Fire Code Declaring as a Public Record the Local Amendments to the 2024 International Fire Code and Adopting the Local Amendments by Reference. Ms. Radler.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to sit or stand before you and talk to you about this proposed ordinance for your consideration for the adoption of the 2024 International Fire Code. We follow with the Building Department historically in our community. The fire code itself is a document that incorporates a lot of the elements from the multitude of building codes. We consider the fire code a maintenance code in that it is also for the benefit of new construction, and also the maintenance of existing safeguards, like our beautiful building we're in here right now. It was done under permits with both the Building Department and Fire Department. All of the existing life safety systems and building fire resistant construction all are maintained by the fire code that we currently have adopted. We're in the same implementation period preceding this and also going forward if the council wills it. We had a public comment period that followed with the Building Department, notification to all of the building industry associates. Most of what the fire code is based on is to help designers with designing special provisions for fire and life safety in Lake Havasu City. And so we are going to have the same effective date as the building official mentioned, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Radler. Are there any questions from members of the council for the fire marshal? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? So just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 25-1371, amending city code chapter 12 dot 12 dot 010 International Fire Code to Adopt the Designated Updated Edition of the Published Fire Code Declaring as a Public Record the Local Amendments to the Published Fire Code and Adopting the Local Amendments by Reference.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Diaz. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is a cooperative purchase of one Ford Transit ADA van from Model One Commercial Good evening, Mr. Cypress.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm back again. I was here a few months back, seeking out your feedback and approval for a couple of vans that we needed to replace, some of our other ones that had worn out. And after we received those vans, we had our third one fail, and it was beyond repair. So that is the main reason why we needed this and didn't bring it to council last time, because it was operating. So right now, we're using this last one as a 2020 Dodge Promaster, and it's met its useful life within the FTA and our TAM plan. So we are able to remove it from service and just replace it with a newer version. We reached out to our servicing dealer in Phoenix and were asking, like, what's up there? Because they know that we've already passed our budget cycle, and we had a little bit of money left over in reserve. And unbeknownst to us, they have a number of brand-new 2023 Ford Transavans that are ADA. And we were able to purchase that, saving about $43,000. The last one we purchased of this exact van in 2023 was over $100,000. So the prices are definitely dropping right now on these. Just a little bit of background on these other vans and this one that we're replacing is they're built on a light-duty chassis, and they actually modified the vans with double-sliding doors, which these vans don't come with. And we ran into issues with the doors malfunctioning, so it became a safety issue. And one had a transmission issue, one had an engine issue as well, but it was mainly the safety issues for the people riding in the vehicles, because the doors wouldn't shut and lock. And we spent enough money trying to get these repaired, and the repairs would only last for a few months. And that's all because of the high use we have right now for our vehicles. So right now, we're averaging 100 to 110 trips a day. So that's in 100 miles per vehicle, so we're doing 500 miles a day, 600 miles a day. So this is why I'm here to ask, you know, for your permission to go ahead and order these, and we can get this one back probably in the next couple of months and get it back in service. And hopefully, we won't miss too many rides. That's one of the problems we run into, is at one time, we had all three of these vans out of service. And so our ride volume would go down for that day, because we didn't have enough to back it up. So we're trying to build our fleet into a fleet of newer vans that use bus stores. So now we've taken that next, to the next level of where I said a long time ago, we don't need a fixed route here, we just need an on-demand system. And now we can do our paratransit, and we can do our on-demand, and now we have the actions of bus stores. So people just walk up and get into them like a regular bus. But now it's a smaller version that's perfect for our community. So you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Cypress. Are there questions from members of the council? Vice Mayor Lynn?
Did you say this is a brand-new van?
Yes.
What year is it?
They're '23s.
Okay, so I just have a question on the warranty. I see that it's got the three-year bumper-to-bumper. Does that start at now?
It starts when we receive the van.
Okay.
So it gets registered in the Ford system the day we take delivery of it.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Councilmember Campbell, did you have a question or comment?
Yes. Originally, I was informed that we had the additional drivers, 247 missed rides, averaging 14 rides a day, and that is the reason why we're buying these new vehicles. But in reality, what you're saying is the Dodge Promaster is failing us due to the wear and tear, and we're replacing those. So how many employees do you have now, and are you going to be needing anymore? Those were my questions when I was told we were buying extras to fill that gap.
Well, currently, right now, our driving staff is all part-timers. So that part-time model worked 2015, 2016 okay, because our volume wasn't that high. Right now, we have 12 part-time drivers, four full-time staff ones, including myself. But now we're seeing the need down the road to start looking at a bigger plan, to expand, maybe look at full-timers down the road, because we need anchor employees down the road that hold that up. But the problem with having part-time, your whole staff part-time, is when you have vacations and some people call out, we only have so many part-timers to call. And then you put vehicles that are broke down on top of that, then it's kind of like catch-22. So right now, we're getting the vehicles up. Our staff is really good. The thing is, we have to be able to not push them as hard, not work them with their max hours, which is the max we can work, is 29 hours a week. We try not to get there for a part-timer, but we do have some dedicated ones that have been with us for many, many, many years.
Okay, so we are replacing some of these. How many are, okay, it was three? Only one?
Only one.
Because I was at an MPO meeting today, and there was about five more coming down the...
No, no, no. We just got two a few months back.
Okay.
Those are the ones that we're replacing, the other two Promasters.
Okay.
So we thought we had this one was working, and then as soon as we took delivery of the new ones, the door broke on this again. And it's just like a money pit. We just kept putting money and money, and just because they modified the body on them at the factory.
So are we having a large growth, or is this just kind of just managing what we have?
We're having a pretty large growth.
Okay. All right, thank you for all those questions.
Okay, no problem.
Are there any other questions from members of the council? Mr. Knutson?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Diaz.
Yeah, Councilmember Diaz.
Are we able to recoup, since these other ones are only five years old, no fault of ours, that are yours? ours, that they're yours, that they're breaking? Are we able to recoup, sell these and get, recoup our costs, some of our costs? And how does that process?
We put them in the, through the city's auction system, and we can recoup that. And that, usually, we use that toward our match on the next batch, so we kind of put that in a holding pattern for us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Patrick. Nice job.
Okay.
Mr. Cypress, I just want to highlight the fact that what we're talking about in terms of the demand of the transit system is what we're responding to. So we have more people in our community that are requesting rides through transit than we have resources to provide. So this is the, why this item is in front of the council this evening. We have missed rides. So Councilmember Campbell, you're correct, and we're about fourteen rides per day on average, we can't provide to the community, and they're asking for it. Patrick, you talked about the sliding doors and how important that is. The sliding doors that get used constantly all day long on the transit, and then those vehicles find their way into fleet maintenance or in the mechanic or sent back to the dealership for warranty work, obviously then out of service. And so I want to kind of point that out. And then lastly, the headline here is that our local match to purchase this vehicle is a little over eight thousand dollars. So, and that is because we're going through the Federal Transit Authority that allows us to accomplish these things. So eight thousand dollars provides a vehicle for Havasu to allow us to address the growing demand for transit in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Any additional questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? So just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Motion.
Councilmember Diaz?
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of one Ford Transit ADA van from Model, from Model One Commercial Vehicles, Inc., in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Diaz, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, item seven point four is ordinance number twenty-five dash thirteen seventy-two, amending Lake Havasu City Code, section three point two zero point zero four zero, schedule of fees and service charges to add and revise fees and service charges. Ms. Olson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the annual item that staff brings to you. Per the municipal code, it is required that you review these fees and charges annually. Typically, there'll be one year in which we look at every fee, all of the details, we recalculate all of the labor and any other costs associated with providing a service, and we can come up with our fee, our cost for our services, and then apply any cost recovery rates to that. Then for the next two years, we just apply the Consumer Price Index to that, to the fees, so that we don't have to do the full study at that level of detail every single year. Last year, we did the full study, so this year, we did the, just the CPI index application. And that CPI for that period, that twelve-month period, was four point three nine percent. The departments have reviewed these fee changes, and we've made all the necessary adjustments to the fee schedule that's been posted online and that's been provided. We did, on that fee schedule, include the current fee, the proposed fee, the cost recovery, and then the difference between the old fee and the new fee, so that council could see, for quicker reference, you could see which fees were changing and by how much. There was one fee request that came as a result of some citizen input that we do want to point out to council for special consideration. Under Parks and Recreation, on the fee schedule, it's page thirteen, I believe, thirteen of nineteen. Under the banners section, there was a request for consideration of having a nonprofit fee for any banners that are hung. We do charge for hanging banners at the Aquatic Center, London Bridge, and at Weeder Park. So staff has included on there a fifty percent of whatever the private or commercial fee is as a nonprofit fee. So that's for your consideration and discussion as well. And with that, I do want to mention the fee changes would be effective January first of twenty twenty-six. And the departments are here to answer any specific questions or detailed questions you may have about the fees, as well as our accounting supervisor, who kind of, who puts this all together for us, Jamie Mazick, will be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions or comments from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lynn?
I see a lot of our fees are down at the Aquatic Center and in our Parks and Rec Department. Is there, I mean, I'm having a really hard time with any fees right now with all of our families. I mean, our swim fees went up, lifeguard programs went up, swim team programs, like all of them went up. And I mean, some of them are like three dollars, but some of them are fifty-seven dollars. Is there a reason why? Because I thought we put extra money aside in our Parks Department, and maybe that was something different. But I see a lot of difference being changed. Is there a reason why?
Yeah, if I may, Ms. Olson. So the staff is bringing to us just the current fee schedule as is and adding CPI to it. That's, that's the policy that we've set for fees and schedules. So all of that's up for discussion with us this evening, and we can make the adjustments as we see fit. But yeah, literally, all they're doing is they took the current numbers and then they added CPI to them, and that's what we have in front of us, with the exception of the banner program that's on page thirteen that Ms. Olson mentioned. And then there also was the addition of Main Street Commons as well, for when people are going to rent out those types of facilities as well, which this is the first time. And then is it next year, Ms. Olson, that you'll do the full audit where you'll true-up the numbers?
We'll have one more year of CPI, and then the year after that, we would true-up all the numbers.
Okay, so from a historical perspective, we, if we don't increase fees on, you know, small incremental over a series of years, then there are large increases when they do come. And we've obviously had those challenges over, over the past, and that's why it's brought to us this way. But if there's certain items, Council, or Vice Mayor Lynn, that you're interested in discussing, we can absolutely have that conversation.
It'd be a lot, because it's the majority of them that I have a, I have a real issue with in the Parks and Rec Department. Like I said, these are things that our families are using and raising these, even a couple dollars, even the drop-in for after-school programs. These parents can't even afford food right now with things going up. I, I can't support any of these fees going up in that area.
Yeah, what page are you on, Vice Mayor Lynn?
Eleven.
Page eleven.
And twelve.
Okay, so starting with.
On the very top.
After-school program?
After-school program, yep.
Is that where you're starting?
Yep.
So you would propose then that we would keep the fees the same for?
All of them, the youth program.
Team break.
Aquatic classes.
Aquatic classes, open swim.
Open swim. Birthday party rentals, like any, all of them, all the way through the whole thing, all the way over on the other side.
Down to.
Banners, I guess, I don't know.
Down to lifeguard training? Is that, if we go on page twelve?
Baseball field prep, those, that's for our youth.
What page are you on for that?
Page twelve on the bottom.
Oh, okay. All right, so then what I'm hearing, you say then, for discussion, is that we start with service S dash three oh eight, after-school program, on page eleven of nineteen, keep the fees the same for the remainder of that page, all the way down to, now changing over to page twelve, service number S three fifty-nine, lifeguard training, keep all of those fees the same?
Three fifty-two, starting on three fifty-two.
Yeah, no, the whole page.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the whole page down to three fifty-nine, and then down to baseball field prep, which is S three sixty-five, keep that the same?
Can you tell, I don't know who uses a fence, is that fencing rental?
That would be for, for events that are needing, maybe.
Except for our ball fields.
Beer garden, they might have to put fencing around it, it might be for field use, depending, you know, any special event that occurs might need to do that, but.
That's not, is that necessary for our, like, ball fields for?
I mean, if they're going to run a special event, that might be a fundraiser, potentially could impact them, but not for general, not for general fitness use. And I'm just trying to summarize your words, so I'm not trying to put words.
Nope. I don't know what all these fees, what some of these fees, what, who uses these things.
And again, we just have to keep, from a strategy standpoint, if we don't do fee increases now, when they do true-up the numbers, and if council at that time says we want a thirty percent cost recovery, the jump may be significant, which we have had that experience in the past, so.
I understand.
So at the time, we thought doing one or two-dollar increases incrementally each year was, was different, but.
And like even on the sponsored swim, I know we said we discuss that with the commercial and the profit, is that the ones that the businesses sponsor? Because I don't know where we would have a cost to recover that if the businesses are paying for it.
Yeah, that would be, but if we kept the fees the same, that's included in that summary that I provided, should that be the motion of the council.
Okay, yeah, at least those ones.
Okay. Yeah, I can support that when it comes to, to those fees. Also, with the banner program, I like what staff is proposing for a nonprofit fee, fifty percent of whatever the commercial rate would, would be. This would be things like Symphonic Winds or United Way, or, these are the banners generally in Weeder Park across the bridge area, those, those are the banner areas. So I could support that as well. And the alternative is that we wouldn't support that, and we would just charge one, one banner fee, which is what we currently do today.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council?
Mayor.
Councilmember Campbell, then we'll go to Councilmember Diaz. Yeah, please, Councilmember Campbell.
I have a lot of concerns about the four point four nine percent CPI, year after year, being added. It fluctuates a lot. It can be from housing, it's completely different than every department. One thing that we're always having complaints about is what are we going to do about housing costs? What are we going to do about, you know, recreational fees? And I requested some information today from the staff, and I found out the revenue fees for, I'm getting to something here in a minute, is like seven hundred and ten thousand for airport license and permits and others, a million twenty-two. License permits and building is almost two million. Recreational revenues are one point two million dollars in fee. We won't go into the wastewater and water user fees, because that's already been embedded in those, that process. When you do the math on that for four point four nine percent CPI, you're, you're in a little over two hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about here. And realistically, I've, I would rather some other, some other things getting tightened up, the belts being tightened up, other than assuming it's four point four, four point four nine year after year. That's a lot. I mean, I, I don't know about all of us business owners here, but wouldn't you just love to be able to throw five percent a year and compound it on? Me personally, I would just rather say every so many years, you just share it up, take a look at it. And when I say share it up, it can definitely go up and down. There's new software technology that's doing our jobs for us. You know, every, we have water meters now that are being, we're not driving around water meters, so I really would love to see the staff just eliminate this increased CPI that we just pull out of the air, because it's all over the place. It's not really totally pulled out of the air, but I think most of you guys understand what I'm saying. Depends on what service you're going for. I don't want to have any more fees for anybody at this time, and I would rather have a real clean cleanup every couple of years to really look at the technology and see how many extra staff we actually have over here, how many we don't, what's going on. But I, I don't know if this was in code to just say, do the CPI every year. I'm just saying, no to any fees this year.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's, it's our policy, so staff's only doing what we've asked them to do. Yeah, so if we wanted to change that policy, we could do it. I just, it's important to keep in mind that if, for the user fees, what we're, that's what we're discussing tonight, if, if they're not paid for or recovered by the people using them, then general taxpayers not using those, those services are paying those fees. So that, that's the difference. So right now, these user fees are paid for those, by those that are using them, and the way that the council policy is, is that we true-up, again, Ms. Olson, is it every three years?
Yes.
Okay, every three years, we true-up, so we have, and then the in-between years, we do a CPI. So when we true-up, based on AI technology, other advancements, efficiencies, whatever we may see, the prices can go up or down, but again, it's a discussion, it's a discussion item for the council. I mean, it's really a policy item that we're here to talk about. So, so I mean, all, nothing's off the table, good points, but just again, if, if the users aren't paying for the fees when it comes to these, then it's the general taxpayers that are paying those fees that are not using those services potentially.
The last time we did this was not that many year, not even a year ago that we kind of shared up. It's been like a year. We're not, like I said, we're just throwing two hundred thousand dollars on here because of a CPI. All I'm saying is, I think for the sake of our, our citizens, that we should just wait and share it up, because I know for a fact that we are buying soft, every time we turn around, we're buying software programs, that we know that are going to actually in the end help us in the long run. I know as a business permit, business, you can upload all your designs online now, you can do it from your office, you're not at the front counter anymore, but it's just another fee on top of that. So I, I'm just, I don't run a business like this, I'm not allowed to just put this money on there year after year. I have to kind of look at it based on what is the cost of products, what is the, how many employees do I need today? And that's, I'm more apt to do the share-up every three years. I know that's what your policy was before. I'm not going to be voting for this fee increase for all the reasons. I don't want to handpick now and make the system even more confused. I don't think any of the Parks and Rec fees should be increased. I know that there has been some changes in Parks and Recs, and I've had some concerns with citizens having more difficult issues trying to rent things or get their kid in a class or something. So while we're going through these changes, growing changes, I think it's time to just put the brakes, let everybody just smooth through this next, what'd you say, year or two? We have another two years before we share up again?
We would go one more year with CPI application, which is just an index used to try and keep pace with our costs that are increasing. Even when we get software, we don't get it for free.
I understand.
So we're, you know, applying those costs as well. So we, next year, we would do CPI just as a measurement. Last year, we did do the true-up, and had we not been applying CPI the prior two years to that, then we would have had to increase the fees by almost twenty percent. So that's what we were at, at different cost changes back then, but that's what could happen if the costs continue to increase. We had a lot of cost increase in the personnel, you know, the wages and salaries and benefits line items for this budget, so we're covering those costs as well, hopefully with a portion of them with the four point three nine.
Yes, and I have seen those numbers too as well, which is salaries have went up in the last five years substantially, and obviously, that's what we're doing. I get it, I do get it, but that's even another strong question. What is that going to look like? And then again, what services should we continue to do? What makes sense to us, what doesn't? So that's just my statement at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Diaz, did you have comments or?
Just, yeah, I think the issue that I was having, and some of it has been addressed, is that it's, it's hard to say, this is what this permit is for, and then what is the true cost? It's kind of abstract. In some, some are concrete, some are abstract, and I have a hard time getting, you know, getting in my head around, like, what does it really cost for each one of these fees? Is it really going to go up? Four point three, is it four point three nine or four point four nine CPI? And that does fluctuate, it's going down. I think it's only, it's only three point something right now, so, so that's, that's the issue I have, is like, what is really the cost of some of these fees, other than just raising that CPI or when we do the deep dive? That's when we should really dive into and see what these things are actually costing, and you get all the elements of the salary and the insurance and the liability and so on and so forth, and the paperwork, you know, that type of thing, so that's my.
Perfect. Now, just, just roughly with the budget that we just passed that went into effect on July one, it was one point five million dollars in, in wage increases. That was just base wages that we, that we did based on, on the feedback that we were receiving, so it's a one point five million there. You know, and it seems like I'm championing fees and service fees. I've always been the, the most critical of, of the members of council on this, but, but it does make sense. One, one example we had is that we waited and we deferred increasing fees, and our organized swim teams saw increases well into the thousands of dollars each year. And, and that occurred for the cost of providing that services. Now, here we are talking about a new pool or a second pool for all sorts of recreational users. So I mean, that's just one example that had we addressed it incrementally over the years, So I mean, that's just one example that had we addressed it incrementally over the years, it would have not had that same impact to those users. Yeah, Councilmember Diaz?
So so what it so you're saying right now, we have a we actually have a ordinance that says we do this every year?
Yes, so that's why the staff is bringing this before us, is that our our policy says they're going to bring this forward each year.
So I'm almost thinking, why don't we? Why don't we just do a deep dive every year? And then if that year requires us to raise the fees, then we raise the fees. If it doesn't, then we don't. So that we don't, we don't go to CPI CPI, then deep dive, and then every year, we should look at the fees and see if we're recouping our true costs and then, but we have to change some ordinance, it looks like.
Yeah, we'd have to change our policy. Mr. Hudson, did you have some comments on that?
Yeah, if I could, Mayor Shi, Councilmember Diaz, just we do the deep dive every three years because it's a very, very, very extensive process. It's about a three, four month process plus?
Probably plus.
Where we're going over every individual individual fee within every individual department, looking at the the costs associated with with all that. If that's what council wants to do each and every year, we can do that. But that is, we're spending a lot of money on all the work that it takes to to true up that fee. So that's what the decision was made every three years to do that true up. But as as indicated, if if council wants to do something a little bit differently with how we look at fees each and every year, whether that's parks fees or development services fees, there's a difference. And I think Mayor and Council, I know you understand it, but for the for the sake of the public, is that we're a fee that's charged to Parks and Recreation for maybe like an open swim, or an event that's catered towards kids, should be looked at differently by the city than an individual that's applying for a zoning application, right? Or for a even for a building permit, those types of things. So there's kind of different categories that are out there. That's the decision that the council has made in in previous years. That's why you'll see that the actual cost of providing that service in Parks and Rec, for example, is is not 100%. It's subsidized by the by the by the by the balance of the budget or by our taxpayers. Whereas you'll see in the development services, it's closer or at 100% cost recovery. So the council in previous years have made a decision that if we're going to provide a service to the kids, that we're going to charge them 30% of what that actual cost to provide that service would be. And in some cases, that's different across the board. But staff is wide open in terms of what direction the council wants to go. We have to understand that the the fees that are collected go towards the cost of service of providing that particular service. And we've tried to tried our best. But I do want to just to put a plug in for for Jill Olson, for Jamie Maisick, who's in the in the audience, if you can raise your hand, who spends months on on just the CIP portion of it, and several months on the on the true up every every third year. So a lot of effort goes into it, and then that's all of our department heads, right? They're all they're all told today that if council brings up a question about a particular fee, that be prepared to talk about it. So our our employees, our directors, all throughout the organization are well versed on all this. But we are waiting for direction from council.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Are there additional comments or questions?
I'll just weigh in. I'm a huge proponent of pay for what you use. I think I say it every single year, and because because that's just how I am. I don't I don't like certain groups subsidizing other groups. If you want to use a facility, then recoup the cost. It just makes sense in my simple brain. But that being said, David, you had some questions about how things go. We don't have to do the CPI. We can come up with any arbitrary number we want to, right? As a as a form of negotiation up here, of compromise, right? But just know that we've we've changed it all the time, depending on what category. I think it was two years ago, we just randomly gave the airport FBO a fuel surcharge break for whatever reason. I don't know why. I didn't vote for it, but that's just kind of happens up here. That being said, I do want to talk about the fuel flowage rate, the military rate. It feels like the negotiations with that drug on for some time, and it feels like it was perfect timing for them to sell that that part of what they're doing. And in my mind, the city has been providing services that haven't been recouped, and I'd like to know if there's any any recourse for that.
Mr. Hudson or Kelly?
Yeah, Mayor Shi, Councilmember Moses, so what you're talking about there is within the fee schedule itself, it shows a military fuel flowage fee that's being introduced at the request of one of our FBOs, and that was Havasu Air Center.
Air Center.
Air Center, yeah. HAC, H-A-C, Havasu Air Center requested that. That was to accommodate the cost and the need that's required for our firefighter professionals to provide ARF services, which is a vehicle out there that's at the ready, that if a fire would occur when a military jet is being hot fueled, or fueled when the motor is running, that that we're at the ready. That is a cost that is high. And we've been, the city's been born, has been paying for that through the services that we provide, because it's important because it's important that we for us to support, our city stands right now, is it's important for us to support the military contract and for the military aircraft to be within with at the airport and within Lake Havasu City. It's not fair for the city to bore that cost when there are a contract in place between Havasu Air Center and with the DLA, who is the federal agency that has that the FBO has a contract with to provide those services. So there that is happening. We were taken a little bit by surprise, so we're reacting as a city the best that we can to make sure that that contract and that operation goes as smoothly as possible. And that request that we had after conversations, we had the previous owner of Havasu Air Center that came to the council meeting and was asking for a this this fee increase to offset most of the cost that that it takes the city to provide those 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 services. Councilmember Moses, I'm just providing providing some background, but to get to your point directly, are we going to be able to recoup the the cost of the last year when it comes to those services? Right now, that's not something that the city is pursuing, where I'm just trying right now with this approach to stop the bleeding at this point. If the council wants to go in a different direction, I'm all ears. Of course, it's complicated by the fact that Havasu Air Center is now sold and is now under the ownership of Velocity. And I've had conversations with Velocity to ensure that that we are doing, that they are aware of the of the cost of the services that we provide, and we need to recoup those costs. In the meantime, we are invoicing them on a month by month basis. But to your point, Councilmember Moses, that is not for the full or the entirety of the services that we provide for that same timeframe.
Yeah, I would just say that it's frustrating, because I feel like the citizens of Lake Havasu have been taken advantage of. So I just plead with.
I have a question. Are we sure we even need those services? We need the fire trucks out there? I was under the impression that the documents we got from Havasu Air Center said that they didn't need to be in there. Have we checked with DLA to make sure those services are actually required?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes, Dolan, yes, we've had conversations. That's why it was a surprise to us as our fire chief, as our airport manager, and others within the organization dug deep to identify what is the city's role. So we have, there's an agreement in place between an FBO or fixed base operator, a business at the airport with DLA on with for a military aircraft, right? And and a few a fuel flowage contract for that. How much is the military going to be paying the business at the airport for the fuel that it receives? So it's a two party agreement. We asked many, many times for a copy of that agreement. We never, we were never able to get a copy of that agreement. When we dug deeper in terms of what does that, what is our involvement as a city? Again, we're not a party to the agreement, but we are, we have an obligation within the terms of the agreement. As we dig deeper in in what that what that is, as we ask the questions, can we get a copy and get the language? Eventually, we got we got language from DLA that shows that an ARF service is required for any hot fueling that takes place at the at the airport. At that point, we are surprised. We were trying to figure this out. Our our vehicle was in the shop, which triggered some of these conversations. So we reached out to Laughlin and bought a used ARF vehicle for a really good deal to to keep that military contract going. But yeah, we were surprised in the midst of all this, not because we weren't asking for the information, but when we finally got the information from DLA, from DC, then then we were, then we understood our obligation, and we were very quick to react. Is that hopeful?
I think that's just the frustration of the transparency of this and that, you know, that we would just want to make sure that we are, the city is not offsetting another business. And we all we all love the military, and we don't want the military not to come in. But the federal government pays for the military and pays for the fees. We shouldn't be offsetting another business so the military can come in. So I just want to make sure we we got that figured out, and we're not using city taxpayer dollars to support the military. And if we are, then maybe we request that for the military, because we love them coming in, and they're great, great for the community. But I just want to make sure we have that figured out. And now we got a new company we're dealing with. I just want to make sure there's that we are, the city is being paid for those services. So I know for a while we weren't. So that's also a concern of mine, so.
And then Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, members of the council, just one, this is a conversation that's certainly not a surprise to the council this evening. We've been talking about this since day one, and and what that looks like in terms of the ARF services, our liability as a city, and and the steps that are needed to get to the point where we feel comfortable with this. So it's a conversation that that we've had as a as a city since the since the onset when we first received that information from DLA. I just want to make that make that clear. This is not a surprise tonight. What's on the fee schedule itself is a result of the conversations that we've had over the last 12 months.
Thank you. I'll just also weigh in too on the fees in general. I think it's definitely fiscally responsible what we're doing. My concern is, is if it's going to be $10 three years from now, and we're just offsetting it and offsetting it, you're still going to pay the same amount. It's like we're selling a car. It's like, well, how much can you afford right now? You're still going to pay the same at the very end, but, you know, I think it is responsible to do it in pieces and pieces, so it's not all 12%, 15% all at one time. And I think too, I would like to see it, I love the true up, but the true up does take a a lot of time and a lot of money. So it's, you know, spending a dollar to save 50 cents doesn't make sense to me either. So I definitely think, you know, and that's a concern, the city's still going to pay for it. And, you know, I know with my business, rates are going up, everything's going up. And yeah, you can't just, you know, I don't do an arbitrary rate of 3.49. I look to see, I compare the price. I do my true up all the time. But throughout the year, you're not, you're kind of also checking to see what other price is, and everything's going on. So, you know, all of a sudden, you know, a sandwich went from $5 to $10. Well, that's going to hurt my business, and it's going to hurt the person. But, you know, is it gradual over time? But you're still going to pay that, and that's my concern with this, is we're still going to pay for it. And I say, I do think we have the most fiscally responsible way of doing it now. Like I said, luckily, it's, you know, 3% to 4%, and it's not 12%. So and like I said, if the true up, and even with the meter comparison too, I think that's great, we get to that point. But of course, the meters aren't free. We're putting all these new meters in, we're replacing them, we're going through all that. At some point, once we have all those meters in, and we don't have the people going out doing the meter reading, yeah, I think those that's where some of the costs would come down in the future, which is what we, of course, aim for. So I think it's just kind of that that balance, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Dolan.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses.
I agree with Jim, Mr. Dolan, 100%. Alls we, by giving them a break now, alls we'd be doing is making future councils have to do a bigger increase, because this, because we we were scared to do the fiscally responsible thing of just small incremental increases now. Mind you, if we happen to go too far and CPI comes down, well, then yay, you know, on that third year, we get to lower rates. It's a nonprofit business. It's not like it goes in anybody's pockets. So I'm willing, I'm willing to negotiate, but but I think it would be fiscally irresponsible to do nothing.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
I appreciate all the statements up here, and I do totally agree with pay for what you use. But another thing that the citizens did not too long ago was they put, well, it is quite a long, guy, where does 20 years go? Holy moly. But yeah, the point is, is we put in a 1% tax and a 2% tax. One was supposed to be for the CVB, and one was supposed to be for the Partners of Economic Development. It's a tax that you guys chose to do. And in the meantime, right now, we're writing a check for $1.6 million to the CVB, and we're writing $500,000 to the PED. Well, those numbers have gone up way beyond that. And I've asked several times that, where is that money going to? Because you guys chose to, that was a big deal to put that initiative out there. I know there's places we can put it. I'm not saying there's any funny business going on, but I'm, you know, we've talked about fire, police, obviously. Tourism needs more fire, police on the street, we get it, where's that money going? But when you talk about taxation with representation, we voted for a certain thing. To me, we're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars, and the CVB and the PED. Jill, I don't want to do this to you if you don't have that number, but I think this past year, on average, it was, I'm talking about 2.1 million between the two of them. Do you know what, kind of know what that number might be for the what we've received in the in the tax?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I knew it, I know it is a bigger number that does get placed in the general fund to cover the services that we provide related to tourism, associated things.
And Partners of Economic Development, I'm not even sure what, you know, could Partners of Economic Development could be a new tree in our community, it could be almost anything. But to me, I think these, all these fees right here are a good example of Partners of Economic Development, and also Convention and Visitor Bureau stuff. I think it makes a difference if we have an aquatics center to bring people to the community. I think even if it's about helping a developer wants to come into town and offer, you know, we're not just constantly just throwing 5% year after year after year onto something other than sharing it up, taking a look at it. But I'm not really asking for some services to be subsidized. I'm saying the taxpayers have money out there that, and I'm going to say, we have been spending a lot of money on things that I don't think are that important. But I think right now, I'm going to just, I understand what you guys are saying, I just don't think this is a good way to do it. And I'm not really too comfortable with that 4.49% just off the top. I think we need to do some cleaning up. I don't think it's here nor there on the half a million, $200,000 that this little 4.49 is going to make a difference for us. But you've heard me, I'm done talking. Aren't you guys happy? Thanks.
Councilmember Campbell, to your point, I'm just going back to last meeting when we had Mr. Buckley here from Golik Havasu giving his presentation. So his remarks were that Golik Havasu brought in 4.1 million, and we paid 1.6 million. So that's the difference, according to his numbers. I'm not cross referencing it with ours, but this is what he reported to us last meeting. And when he did that, that additional money, as Ms. Olson had mentioned, goes into offset police, fire, actually, the ordinance for the bed tax has some London Bridge repairs. There's other components to that that we use. So just for clarification, that was just what we learned last meeting. So the CVB number, I don't, or the Golik Havasu number, I obviously don't have the Partnership Economic Development number, but good for thought on that.
Yeah, so, but the question that I had, which was, how much is that total amount that we do get, and how much are we subsidizing other organizations for because we've just, you know, removed that? It's all good. Like I said, I'm done. Yes, I was very aware of that. I just wanted to know, what is that total number? I know that short term rentals has also brought us a lot of revenues as well. And so, yeah, there's always, in the world of government, there's always revenues coming in, and sometimes we don't have to always put it on the citizens of our community. That's my feelings.
Vice Mayor Lynn, then we'll open up the public hearing.
Yeah, I have a question, and this is new, and we talked a lot about it at the meeting with Golik Havasu and PD on the commons. So I don't think that this is thorough enough on that last page, on, it's the very last page of the proposed facilities. All we have on here is concession stand, and we have a price of 300. We have nothing about what's in the concession stand. We have nothing on the fencing, the stages, the barricades, whatever they're storing in that that Mr. Gray said that was going to be available to any.
Vice Mayor, if I may just stop you, just, it's the very second to last page in the fee schedule on our schedule. It's multicolored, and it looks like this, there's only one other page beyond this.
This facility.
Yeah, it's the proposed facility use fees.
But this has nothing about the stage. It, I mean, we, I see on the top, London Bridge stage, but this concession stand, according to Mr. Gray at the PD, the concession stand was going to have the storage unit that would have fencing, barricades, the stage. I can't even remember what else was going to be in there. I'm also on the on the PD board, so this was also announced at the PD that those things would be given to the city, gifted to the city, and anybody using that facility would be able to use those items. It leaves all of those things off. So if I am going to go and rent that spot, and I rent the concession stand, I get the stage, I get the concession stand, I get the chairs, I get all that for $300? stage, I get the concession stand, I get the chairs, I get all that for $300? That's, but it's not, it's not outlined here any differently.
The fencing would be, there is a number, the fencing number you actually brought up a few minutes ago on fencing, that fencing would be the charge that we would charge fencing for Main Street Commons as well. That's for all park amenities. And then the concession stand is here. Mr. Goodson, if you, I mean, we haven't even operated it once. It's not even built yet, so I think they'll come back once we have some certainty, but...
Yeah, 100%. So Mayor and Vice Mayor Lynn, I think 100% in terms of we need a, I need a fee schedule. I need fees associated with the use of those facilities that are out there, whether it's the stage, the concession, the space itself, other aspects of what's being used there. It's an event space and there's things that are, that are available for the event promoters. But there, we need to recoup our costs with regards to all of these. That plan right now is being developed. The consent, so this is a fee schedule that is an update from previous years. These are established fees that we're bringing back before council and, and looking at that. We will come before council like we have before and look at additional fees when things like that occur. When the concession building is completed, we're going to have a much better idea of what that looks like. We are going to probably be requiring deposits on the concession building because there's going to be appliances or other equipment within, within that building. So we need, we're going to need a cleaning deposit, we're going to need a damage deposit, we're going to need a lot of things associated with that, that, that building. And all of that is being developed now as we're in that construction phase. So what you see before you right now is the existing fee schedule. We, as we, as we build, develop and create a space that the promoters want to use, then we, we're, they're going to have to be charged a fee to utilize those amenities.
I'm confusing because it says Main Street Commons concession stand. Why do we even have it in here then? I don't even know why we even have it in here because we don't have a concession stand there and we never had. So I don't even know why we have that in there. It says Main Street Commons concession stand, $300. If there's not one, then how can we charge it? I don't even, if, I understand if we're going to add those things on later, then let's add it on at that time. Because to me, just say this concession stand got done in December. It's not going to happen, but just say it did. And now we have this concession stand there, all this stuff being stored in there because that's how I'm looking at it. And we don't review this for a whole nother year. I don't know how we're going to recuperate these fees. I, I would rather you just take that whole thing out and not even put it in here. And then when it comes back to us and the concession stand is completed and all those items in there, then look at it. I don't, I don't even want it in there now.
We can make that, that's our decision to be able to do. So the concession stand right now for a class two commercial would be 360, for a class three would be 150. And then there is the, the non-refundable deposit, but it's, when we operate it and we need to start using it, we then will have a fee schedule come to a separate just for those items. But feel free to make a motion with, without that on there and for consideration and we'll see what we can do. So, all right, this is a public hearing. You don't have to sign up, but we did have a few folks sign up. So we'll start with Pam. If you'd like to begin, please welcome to the council meeting and share your comments.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. My name's Pam Freitas and I'm president of the Western Welcome Club of Arizona. Now, we've been in existence for 54 years. We started in 1971. A lot of people do not know us because they think we're a welcome wagon, you know, come to the house when you buy our house. No, we're not. We're a type of nonprofit that does not get any funding from other nonprofits. We are a nonprofit that makes money and gives it out to the other nonprofits. So a lot of people don't realize it. You have a sheet in front of you that shows on the back that we've given out $139,000 in eight years and all the different entities that we've supported. And one you will see is Park and Recs, but anyway. We are just a group of ladies, 60 to 90 years old, and we make and sell crafts. We do bunkos, we do different organizations to make money to give back to the community. We have, okay, we also donate to groups like the Disabled Vets, Canine Echo, The New Dog, Meals on Wheels, Haven House, Food for Kids, Grace Arts, The Child Scholarship, just some on the list. There is the list in the back. We've been doing this for over 25 years. In fact, at the beginning, I found out the Western Welcome donated $10,000 to the community center when, when the city didn't have money to help put in the kitchen. And that was years ago. So on the other side of the sheet, you will see our rental income over the last nine years. What it is, is we have two bunkos a year. We have our boutique, which is a couple days and usually we have a fourth entity. I didn't put that in there. So we use that community center at least four times a year. Now, if you look, the difference between 2024 and 2025, we've jumped from $2,900. This is our meeting rooms. We have meeting rooms also in there. It jumps to $4,400 this year. Now that's a 52% increase. Now you guys are talking about 4%. I'm not seeing it, okay? If we have to pay $4,400 this year to rent the community center and we're giving $28,000 over nine years to the community center, what, what do we do? You know, we're going to have to take and give somewhere else. I just was surprised about that. And now they've also thrown in that $400 cleaning. We've never had this before. Now I know our group, the ladies here, every time we use the kitchen and that, it's immaculate or we leave. Now I know you have concerts there and people are the neatest at concerts, so I can understand cleaning. But this is taking our money away that we earned to give back to the community. So that's what we're fighting for. We're just trying to figure out why all of a sudden it jumps up 50 some percent over our fees from 2024 to 2025. Excuse me. Even in 2020, we gave out money, $1,500 to the community when everybody had COVID. So we were still working with COVID. So I know it's not much. It's not much money when you consider it, but when you have 120 some women that do this on their own, we do it with our own funds, nobody backs us at all. That's why we're just wondering why all of a sudden we're just getting this big increase. Anybody have any questions on anything?
Yeah, so it looks like your, the increase from 24 to 25, again, this is unaudited, these are your numbers, not mine. So I, just some questions, the boutique, it increased from $925 in '24 to $1,622?
Yes.
Expand it, was it bigger? Were you using more rooms?
No.
Okay.
No, that's the new fee sheet.
Okay.
Came out.
The one from last year?
No, this says effective 1/125.
Okay. All right, yeah, we'll be able to cross reference. So just so you know, what we're doing today is an introduction. So whatever motion makes it its way to today's introduction, we won't have final adoption until our next meeting.
Okay.
So we will make through and thank you for sharing your comments.
Okay, thank you, Council.
Thank you for all that you guys do for Lake Havasu City. It comes from Campbell, do you have a question?
Thank you. I want to say thank you for coming up and giving us this information because I've been here, we have like the rodeo grounds and we don't use any, you know, they pay for all of the things to get people there. Delbert Days, we have the kids coming for free. Life is not always just completely fair. You're a good example of a great relationship that we, the local municipalities should always cherish and hold near and dear door hot. I know that we have some reductions for 501(c)(3)'s. I think it's incredibly important because the hardest job you have is the volunteer hours you put in there. It is always easier for somebody just to write a check. I've said that in the past versus volunteering their time and your energy and how much you give back to our community. So you are a perfect example of what I'm trying to say. There is no perfect formula to what we're doing here, but we as a community have always supported our 501(c)(3)'s and I absolutely want to continue to do that. There is no reason not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you so much. And the next speaker, Steve.
Can you hear me okay? Hi, Council. My name is Steve Senke. I'm the president of the Lake Havasu Symphonic Winds, a, another nonprofit musical organization that performs three concerts per year at the Lake Havasu High School Performing Arts Center. And I'm here to address the banner hanging fees at the top of page 13 of the fee schedule. Because I'm not familiar with the Aquatic Center or London Bridge banners, I'm just addressing Wheeler Park banners at this time. And I do have to make a correction that I believe I heard Ms. Olson say that a citizen came in and suggested a reduced fee for five, for nonprofits. I'm presuming I was that citizen, but that was not my suggestion. My suggestion was take us back to last year when we paid no fee for banner hanging. This was introduced this year to our chagrin when we went to hang a banner for our spring concert and was told it was going to cost $51, which I see is going to increase with your CPI to $53 this year. I do need to thank Mayor for picking up the tab for a spring concert banner hanging fee. I appreciate that. We appreciate that. Also your assistant, Ally, who's been so helpful keeping me informed of when to come and what to research and giving me all the paperwork to look over. And I also like to thank Gabby from Parks and Rec for moving on the fee, for dividing it up for a nonprofit category. She was very helpful as well. And everyone that I've dealt with, with you, with the city has been pleasant, courteous and professional, which I appreciate. The Symphonic Winds have been entertaining the people of Lake Havasu City since 1999. 2025, this year, is the first year that we've had to pay a banner hanging fee. And it's not like they just introduced the fee at $5 or $10. I mean, $51 from zero to 51. I don't even think my car does that. As a nonprofit, the Symphonic Winds has donated thousands of dollars to the Lake Havasu High School Band Boosters and provides scholarships to students who wish to pursue careers in the field of music. We also donated the risers that you see admitting the performances in the PAC. And with all the CPI talk, and we all understand that, it's, it's what it is. Do you know what hasn't increased in the last 20 years? Our ticket prices. We want to keep wholesome family entertainment affordable for all. And while we very much appreciate the effort from the Parks and Rec Department to issue a reduced fee for us, this still puts a big crunch in our tiny little budget. We are requesting the city to please consider eliminating the fee altogether for nonprofits for the banner hangings as it was last year and years past. Is there any questions? We have a concert December 14th, 3:00 PM at the PAC. Come on down.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And thank you for your comments about our assistant, Ally. She is amazing.
She is.
Thank you for, for all that due due, Ally, for us. And you know, we don't get to, once the fee schedule is selected and approved by the council, we don't have the ability to waive them. So I just want to make sure I did not waive fees. I paid the fees myself so that I, there is no opportunity for us to do any other opportunity for that. So, all right, any other, that concludes those that signed up to speak, but now it's open for anyone who would like to speak. Just make way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Marilyn Thompson. I am the director of Have Adopt Children's Christmas Project. We are a gift giving program for local Lake Havasu City children in need during the holidays. This is our fourth year doing this. In the past three years, we have served over 400 children that would probably not have a Christmas if we didn't step in. We, like so many other nonprofits, that I'm part of Western Welcome, I'm part of the Havasu Side by Side Club. We do a lot of things for our community. We do not get government funding. We get private funding. We go out and we seek donations, but we also have a one, once a year fundraiser and that is at the Aquatic Center. It's a banko. And the first two years went perfectly smooth. It was great. We paid $171. That really helped us because every dollar that we can goes back into helping these kids. We're not paid. We use our own cars, we use our own gas, we use our homes, our own computers. So everything that we make, we try to give back to these children in our community. So this last year, we wanted to have our annual banko for 2025. We went in six months in advance, just like we had in the past. We couldn't get a date. We had to seek another venue. We did, but we wanted to go back to the community center because it is a community center. It's for our community. We went back the day after our banko. We had to schedule it a year in advance. There were no dates available, but one. We took it. And then we were told, oh, by the way, from the 171, your fees are now $627 and it has to be paid today. That's a lot for us. We're, we're a small, small organization, you know, to take that $627, how many kids? We, we spend about $133 on average per kid. So our season is right now, you divide that by 133, how many more kids could we take into our program? You're eliminating the kids. And again, this is a, this is a community center for all of us to be able to use. I'm not asking you to take away the fees. I'm asking you to make them reasonable for organizations like us, like Western Welcome, all the other ones that we utilize that facility to do fundraising so we can put it back into our community, to our youngest residents, these children, and not just, you know, for gift giving, but also for the swimming. You know, there's so many things that we need to do for our community. And I think that raising the prices is, you're, you're going to eliminate us, you know, and it's, that's a travesty. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, I, I'm pretty easygoing, but before when Sherry was at the Aquatic Center, everything was run smooth. We had no issues. But when I went to book this, we, we've had problems. And I, I think maybe the staff needs to know that the, the people working there probably need some training, you know, on, on business relationships because we are a customer now. So that's all I have to say. Just reconsider, if you want to charge the promoters for the, all the concert series, go ahead. I don't care. You know, I, I do attend them, I will pay the higher prices. But when we're trying to put it back into the community, please consider the nonprofits who are doing our work daily to make our community better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marilyn?
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 Vice Marilyn has a question.
What was the, what was the increase from last year? It went from... So from 2024, we paid $175 and the deposit we gave was $627 and that had to be paid upfront. And we did, we, we did, I, I did make multiple phone calls to find out why afterwards and I was never, probably 10 phone calls, never got a response. That's when I reached out to the mayor via email. He got the ball rolling. A staff member did call me back. She did offer to give us the $400 back within two weeks. Didn't get it back. I was leaving, that was in May, early May, when I, I was leaving to get out of the heat for the summer, mid-July, after making more phone calls, didn't, didn't hear back. I said, okay, when I get back in September, I'll go down there. The second week of September, I finally got a phone call. Why do I want to cancel? And it's like, now we want to cancel, okay? Now, now we don't want to do it anymore. So you're not doing it now? We're not doing it now. Is that difference that, that difference in cost that was the deposit for the cleaning? Was that what made the difference? I, I, yeah, it's the cleaning, yeah. Which we, you know, like Western Welcome, you know, we're adults here. You know, we, we have, we're a 501(c)(3), we have an Arizona nonprofit, we hold a city business license. We're going to leave things the way we found them or better. And so we've never had an issue saying, oh, you left it, you know, in a bad condition. We're, you know, we're helping our community. We're not there to make, to destroy things. But with the deposit, we didn't get it back until the second week of October. So that was from May until the second week of October. And that was after many, many messages left and not getting a response until the second week of September, when one of the, the gals down there called and wanted to know why we wanted to cancel. And I said, well, this is the perfect example, you know. Sorry about that. Is, can I ask our staff that, that cleaning fee, is that a deposit or is that actual cleaning fee? Do they get it back if it's clean?
It's refundable, 100% refundable.
Do, do they know that when they're...
No. We were told it rolls over, which is kind of silly because all the...
Pam, if you can get to a microphone, I'm sorry. Yeah, please, yeah. If people at home can't, can't hear you.
We just kind of feel that you have so many entities doing the community center, having this $400, it's going to be an accounting nightmare if somebody has to keep getting the $400 and then you have to give it back, especially if it takes like seven months, like they had to wait to get the money back. Now, we have the four entities, like I said, our bunkos and our boutique. So we give $400, which you already did for our banko, right? Now, we're going to have our boutique... Now, we're going to have our boutique coming in November. Now, what's going to happen? Are they going to refund our $400 and then all of a sudden we have to put another $400 in to, to cover the boutique? And then in March again, we have our bongo. So are we going to get the money back and then do another $400? Your accountant is not going to like you very much doing that many repeats and writing checks back and forth. And if you roll it over, it just seems to me that the city would be benefiting because they could be collecting interest on all that funds that come in if they roll everybody's money over. That's my opinion.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Ms. Olson, do you have any background of that? Is that, is that a thing? Or maybe Ms. Vera?
Gabby, if you would.
Mayor, Council, can you clarify your question?
So the cleaning deposit, if they are, if the facility is clean and meets the requirements, we give them back their money?
100%. So as soon as the event's over, typically our maintenance staff will go in and double check that the facility is clean, tidy, there's nothing broken, and then it should be issued back almost immediately. It takes, I think, two weeks, around two weeks to get it back. So I know I'm not supposed to address the public, but I do want to apologize on behalf of our department. We are working through some customer service related situations, and hopefully with some of the new implementation we have, we're going to avoid these issues. I would like to second that Sheri was a rock star, 100% was a rock star. And without having this rock star, we've been able to identify these huge gaps. And with Sheri leaving, it also took away that big history that she had with a lot of these organizations that maybe the people who were assisting you at the time didn't necessarily have. And that's not 100% fair to the nonprofits and all of the user groups that continually use our facility. The other thing I do want to address while I'm up here, it is really hard to get space for any of your events. And the, the woman who came up here earlier, yes, unfortunately, sometimes it is a year in advance, especially in some of those more popular months, which is some of the stuff that we were working through. And I think it was at our last council retreat, the question had, had kind of arose like, hey, like, maybe we can start offsetting some dollars with utilizing the facility and make it more of a, of a revenue generating opportunity. But our facility is so booked with, you know, the Western Welcomes and their bunkos and their activities and the rods and relics and all of these different community groups that already use the facility. So we're just working through that. Obviously, like I said, there's a huge gap, and we've already kind of established that we need another Sheri. So we're, we're hoping, with the, with the new hires that we are putting in place, they're rock stars, but it's still that training issue. So we're working through it. And I do want to be transparent, candid, and honest, and apologize, of course, on behalf of the department. And I'm sorry that all of you unfortunately had to experience some of that or were not necessarily informed or given the proper, one, the proper customer service that you deserved, or two, the proper information at the time of your booking.
Ms. Vera, is, if right now, are we recommending people carry it forward to, so if you have all?
Yeah, 100%. So, so, so just like that. So we don't want to, we're, we're, okay, here you go, and then they have to either make up that $400 again, or let's say they have one event on the book, but then they're trying to book out another one, that's $800 than that we're requiring for a deposit. We're not doing that. Or at least, that is my intention. I hope that's not the case. And if it is, we will rectify that.
If I have four events in a year, and I have them all on the calendar, I'm going to pay one $400 deposit plus the rental fee for the, the four events?
Yes.
I'm not paying $400 for each?
No, you should not be.
At a time of reservation.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And I, I do, I hope that is correct information that you all are getting as well.
If it's not, go, go see her team.
Follow me.
Yeah. So we'll work through, through those, but yeah, excellent. Any other questions from members of the council? All right. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Michelle Long, and I'm just listening to everything that's going on. And some of these ladies have been here for 25 years. Don't they have credit? I mean, don't, haven't they proved? I mean, it's one thing if you're doing a rock concert, but these guys have proved themselves that they haven't broke anything, and maybe after so many years of being somewhere, they deserve a little bit of credit. That's all I got to say.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Long.
I'm against, oh, hey, Bonnie Toy. Oh, hi, Mayor, City Council. Also, I want to reiterate with everybody, along with everybody else, the fact that we really appreciate you and everything that you guys do for the city. I know that your work is valuable completely, and people do appreciate you, and if you don't hear it enough, maybe because we're not saying it loud enough. The fees are, I know that our society is struggling right now. It seems like everywhere and anywhere, the government shutdown, period, that people are going to be struggling, and adding more fees and more fees is just going to hurt them. The banner fees for Symphonic Winds, that banner thing, maybe, is there a way to, when he mentioned it last time at the city council meeting, I was sitting there, I wonder if there's a way to reduce the fees by simply letting the people who are going to have permission to put a banner up, put it up themselves instead of paying somebody from the city to put it up? I mean, that would save the city, the taxpayer money from sending somebody out as long as the organization did it without hurting anyone. And then Main Street Commons, in case you haven't thought about it before, but that might be a great place for banners. You might need to put up a thing to put banners up there also, so then you can charge the businesses, not nonprofits, but businesses, to put up banners around there because it's very visible downtown. Just that I'd suggest that. But the, everything you have, have mentioned about the fees, we definitely don't need to raise it. Matter of fact, I would like to say, you know, Dollar Days for the Aquatic Center for everybody. Might, one day a week during the summer, might be fun.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to council. I'll try to summarize some of the discussion that we've had of where we stand, and then we can have discussion from council wherever we want to go. One point I just want to make sure is that some of the discussion that we had this evening on this particular item was about revenue and the money that we're, we're making. We're not looking to make any money. This is really cost recovery or a policy that the council's only going to cost recovery a certain level or percentage, which is indicated in what has been presented to us. So some of the conversations that we've had this evening, for consideration, would be adopting the fee schedule as presented with a few exceptions. The exceptions would be starting on page 10 of our proposed master fee schedule, starting under Roman numeral five, Leisure and Cultural Services with youth programs, continuing the rest of page 10, all of page 11, continuing on through page 12, stopping at lifeguard training, service number S356, and then picking back up at the baseball field prep at the very end of page 12, which is service S365. And then on the banner program, if we want to have a nonprofit fee, 50% as proposed now, or something different, or not at all. And then the final item would be the rental facilities for, for the Aquatic Center, but some of the testimony that I heard tonight is some of the challenges that we have with the increases that some of these organizations experienced is that last year was the true-up year. So that was the year that we trued up. And typically, all the years I've been in council, Parks and Rec has not been increased at the CPI number. We've always made some sort of adjustments to, to Parks and Rec, always, and leisure services. So I hope I didn't miss anything, but if I missed anything for consideration to put back on the table from members of the council, please let me know. And then let's have some discussion on where we want to go with these, or we'll entertain a motion from somebody that we can decide if that's where we're going to go. Councilmember Diaz?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
And I'm still, I'm still think that this is a little premature, and there's other, and there's other issues besides the groups that just came tonight. There's other, I've heard from many others, even the gentleman that runs the, the gun show is not, not happy with some of the stuff that's going on. But I'm going to make a motion right now that we do not approve any of the fees, and we come back and table it for right now and look at it at a different time till we get this straight, because right now I think it's just all over the map. So my motion is to decline any of these fees, all of them, right now.
I'll second that.
So I don't know that a motion needs to happen in that case. Ms. Gary, is that what?
Yeah, so tonight is the first reading, and so usually the motion would be to introduce, and then that opens it up for the second reading next time. So any direction that you want to get staff on changes that you'd like to see coming back? I mean, if it's just not, I, I don't want to misunderstand the motion, but if it's not to, to do anything, then there would be, there would be no introduction, and we wouldn't be able to bring it back for adoption at a later date.
Couldn't he, excuse me, Mayor?
Yeah.
Didn't he make a motion to accept the fee schedule with 0% CPI?
It's, well, it's just an introduction at this time. So if that is the direction back to staff, then we'll bring you that information at that next, at the next meeting. So whatever direction you would like to give staff, and there's consensus for that, then you'll move to introduction.
Let me withdraw that motion.
All right. Then Councilmember Campbell, do you withdraw your second?
I withdraw.
Okay.
So my new motion is to accept?
If I could, Councilmember Diaz, just real quick, if I, I'm trying to predict where you're going, keep in mind the military fee. So the military fee would, if, if a motion was made to introduce this ordinance with 0% CPI, what would happen with some of those fees?
Hold on. So let me, let me clarify. So when, when we're adopting the motion, the motion is the schedule that puts together the percentages or by market rate by which we're going to charge the fees. Giving us direction as far as the CPI is, is kind of a separate from, from what's in, that has nothing to do with the ordinance before you. That would be direction on how you'd like us to handle those annual increases, but that doesn't have anything to do with the introduction. So if you want to pull out the ordinance and look at those items that are listed within the ordinance, some of those are new, some of them are revised, it's going to explain to you what we're doing. So when we're introducing new fees, that, that all needs to be done through the introduction and the adoption of the ordinance. I don't know if that's helpful.
Yeah. It, it, it's helpful, but it complicates what?
What you're trying to accomplish.
Yes.
So all we're trying to do tonight is the first read. And so if there's, I don't know, I don't know that there's consensus. I don't know that I have a consensus feeling of, of what you want staff to bring back at this point, as far as the CPI increase. Some of those new fees to get them on the books, we have to have them introduced and adopted, or some of them we need to have revised. So that's really what's before you in the ordinance.
So, so, thank you, Ms. Gary. So if we look at our packet that's presented in front of us, the ordinance number, so after the council communication, there is page one of two, which is the ordinance, which we're actually considering tonight. And as Ms. Gary had mentioned, what we would introduce would be the different fee schedules. We have the service products or regulations added, so we have the court enhancement fee, the jail recovery, or jail cost recovery fee, the court cancellation fees. Those are set by code. And then going under service products or regulations revised, it lists all of those items, which would take into account the, the peddler's license use of facilities, fuel flowage, military rate, airfield services, miscellaneous services, refuse service, additional can, community event, or community center events, banners in Aquatic Center, and then installation of liquefied petroleum gas. That would be what we're introducing. So then after we introduce that, if we have a motion and a second, we can then give direction for staff to bring back to us for final, for consideration of final adoption at our next meeting. Does that make sense?
Mayor, you clarified that for me, because this seems like two different motions. One is, are we accepting these new fees that are in front of us, completely added, brand-new things? Or should we discuss those and address those individually? And then the next one would be, are we okay with the overall CPI? So once again, I feel like we've just bundled. Kind of reminds me of the, the vending, it kind of reminds me of the bathrooms in the concession stand. Boom, we're all together.
No, yeah, so let me, let me clarify again. So, so the ordinance, if the suggested motion is to introduce ordinance 251372, amending Lake Havasu City Code Section 3.20.040. That is the ordinance that follows the council communication on page one and two. Within those, this ordinance, so under, for example, under the service products and regulations revised, under Service Center S306, Community Center Events, those would be tied currently as presented to CPI. We then would give direction to bring back for final adoption, what we, that we want no CPI increase, that we want whatever it is that the council wants. But I also don't have clarity that we all have, that we have a consensus right now at all. So I think if we get an introduction of this and a second, we can have that discussion and see where we have consensus, give that direction, and then have final consideration for adoption of this item at our next meeting. Does that make sense?
I'm just, I'm just...
It's all, it's all codified, so it has to be done through, through the city code. So, but if we don't get an introduction, we can't have discussion.
It, it makes sense to me. I, I see what you're trying to do. You're trying to move the ball forward and give us all a chance to take it all in and then make the appropriate changes at the subsequent meeting, which is how city works. We do two readings, one to take it all in, one to think about it, one to make the decision. That's how city's supposed to go. So I understand what you're trying to do, because if we don't get it going now, well then we never get it going, and, and then we can't do our budget and all that stuff. So I'd propose to, I'd make that motion for you. I can't remember everything you just said.
Just use the suggested motion, and then we'll have some discussion.
I'll, I'll go with the suggested motion, but, but I would like to see a track change in our email of, you know, of, of what we're talking about on page 11, 12, or you know what I mean? I'd like to see that, clear as day of, of what they're trying to subsidize.
Do you have a motion?
I move the suggested motion.
I think Ms. Gary wants a...
I move to introduce ordinance number 25-1372, amending Lake Havasu City Code Section 3.20.040.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Councilmember Moses. We have a second from Councilmember Koch to introduce the amended code section. Again, that's the, right after our council communication. Now, at this time, if we could try and get some consensus from the council so we can give staff direction to bring for our final adoption. So our final adoption will be at our next meeting. So we just need to decide our, do we want staff to take away the CPI? Do we want staff to come back with the fees, the adjustments to the leisure and recreational fees that we talked about? Do we like the 50% banner fee for nonprofits or not? So those are the three questions. Can I start with you, Councilmember Moses, and we'll just make our way down the, the dais and see where we stand?
I'd like to see some form of a CPI. Otherwise, we'll get into this situation where we have this large, hey, look at what you're charging me situation, instead of we could do, if we do incremental, that way businesses have time to adjust, nonprofits have time to adjust, everybody has time to adjust. The banner hanging fee, I'm okay with.
With a nonprofit at 50%?
We can do nonprofit 50% if you like. I'm open to it anyways. What was the third?
The recreation fees, leaving them the same, without any adjustment.
I don't know about that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Koch?
Again, I think you and I were on council together when we really started this process, and it was because we caught into this predicament where we had this huge increase, and there was no way around it to make the budget work without doing the increase, and it hurt so badly for all the citizens and all of the organizations. I worked for a nonprofit that used the Aquatic Center, and those fees are hard, so I get it. But we do have to do some, some form of an increase, or we're going to get so far behind. The electricity's gone up, water's gone up, everything goes up. The cost to run that aquatic center is atrocious, and we all know that. We've heard that for years and years. So...
Well worth it.
It is well worth it. It's just, it, it's, it's a large expense that has to, we have to make some money on the use of it to keep the lights on and the bathrooms going and the staff there and the maintenance. So we need some form of, of an increase. I'm fine with the banner fees and...
And you're okay with the nonprofit banner fee as well?
Right. Right.
Okay.
And as far as, as the Parks and Rec, the fees, I'll listen, I'll be open. But, I mean, again, all of that stuff still costs more money. It's, the staffing, the cost of insurance, and all, everything, staff wages, has all gone up. If we don't keep up with it now, I fear that the increase that we're going to have to do down the road is going to be so bad, it's going to hurt way worse than an incremental increase here and there.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Koch. Vice Mayor Lynn?
Can you remind us what the, the 4.39%, what are we gaining? What's the amount?
200.
Based upon Councilmember Campbell's calculations, it was around 200,000. I have not run those calculations, but it would be.
It's about 200.
It's about, that sounds about right. If I could take a moment to clarify something on CPI, just for the record, we don't take just one month's CPI, the, like, we didn't look at September, because it was three. We know that September, it's one thing, August is a different number. What we do is we look at a full 12-month period from December of the prior year, to December of the year we're comparing. So we do try to get that. It's the difference over that 12-month period that actually captures some of those ups and downs in between. So hopefully that clarifies, we're not just picking and choosing a number that's moving every day. So.
Okay. So I'd be fine with dissolving the whole CPI for the $220,000. I think we can find that somewhere else. But I think I have a question on the new services.
No CPI?
Nope.
Okay.
No CPI.
Banner?
The banner.
The banner fee, nonprofit fee?
No banner fee.
No fee for nonprofits, or no fees?
No fees.
For, for commercial?
They're doing, they're doing, well, commercial. Or what are we talking, like, commercial? Give me an example.
Commercial would be the concerts in the, at the aquatic center, if they are for-profit.
That's a, that's a nonprofit. How many for-profits do we even put banners up for right now?
For-profits.
For-profits. Do we even do that?
If it's free, which certainly will be.
I know, Gabby.
I'm just curious. I've never seen it.
Director Vera actually provided a number of the total banners on.
Can I hang my business sign in front of Cal's, Cal's Restaurant?
I'm just curious if we, if we even do it.
For free?
So in most cases, as Jill stated earlier, so we counted a total of 32 banners. Did we cross-reference who was a nonprofit, or what was a commercial? No, not at the time. I, I don't, I don't want to be a liar and try to pull a number out of the hat. If that's something, then I can bring back to council, so we have that information, so you can make the best educated decision. I can do that for you.
Maybe, because I've just never seen a for-profit do it. So, I mean, maybe we just ban putting a for-profit's business.
Well, and then.
Putting it in our parks.
Trying to think some of the.
I mean, $50, I'll put mine up there all day. That's the cheapest advertising there is, if that's what you're going to charge.
You can bring it back. Yeah, you can bring it back, Ms. Vera.
I'm just saying.
We're going to continue on. So, and then.
Can I make a point to that, just for a second?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Just because I, I just want to, it's really easy to get a 501(c)(3). It's really easy to go get that tax identification, and then.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think we're.
I know it's really easy. I'm not seeing anybody here, but there are bad actors that we have to protect against, right? So it's really easy to go get that fee and charge a 90, and that has a 90% admin cost that goes back to the original organizer. There have been bad organi, there have been bad entities in this town before that have taken advantage of the people. So we have to protect, I, I know, present company excluded, but there are real problems that we have to guard against.
All right, Councilmember Lynn, so when it comes to the recreation fees, I think we know where you stand?
Hmm.
No increase there. Okay, and then did you have questions, you said?
Well, I still don't even understand, because we didn't really talk about this commons. I'm still confused with, with that, because we didn't, that was not put in the motion. That wasn't discussed about the commons in the concession stand.
Yeah.
That needs to be taken out, too.
We'll come get consensus on that in a minute. Let's, let's get to where we can. All right, Councilmember.
Mayor, if I can, just for clarity, just in, for the sake of saving time, when we talk about the, the CPI, are we talking about for parks? Or are we also including, like, development services fees? So is, is council separating out the different fees that, that we're talking? A lot, a lot of tonight, we're talking about parks fees. Are we also talking about fees associated and from issued by development services? Because that's, that's probably the largest source of fees.
That's why I asked, how much is the whole C, this whole entire CPI? How much, with all the increases throughout the whole thing, is that $220,000?
Yes.
The entire CPI?
Yeah.
Over, is that over three years?
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the $220,000 is not a calculated number from the Finance Department, from admin services?
Correct, but it sounds like it's in the ballpark.
Okay.
But, and it's an annual amount, not a three-year amount.
Okay. All right, so with no CPI, Vice Mayor, you're saying development services, growth does not pay for growth?
It's 220,000. I think we can find 220,000 somewhere else.
Okay. Councilmember Diaz, so CPI or no CPI?
No CPI.
Okay. The nonprofit banner?
No, no, no charge for nonprofits. And I do know there are some bad actors out there, but we could weed out the bad actors pretty easy. It's not that hard.
All right, and then if you have no CPI, then the Parks and Rec fees would be the same.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Dolan?
This is bad business. This is, this is fiscally irresponsible. We're shooting from the hip. Like, oh, it's only 200,000. It's only 200,000. But then we complain about cars and this. Well, that's a lot of money, and the taxpayers pay for that 200,000, or this 50,000. It's like, we're just shooting from the hip. Like, where is this 200,000 coming from? And I, I love Western Welcome. You guys have helped out with me when I was traveling up with people 30 years ago. And I think that's what we need to dig into and get through these numbers in the next two weeks, is how can we protect organizations like that? How can we protect those things? But no, we're not going to raise any developer fees. If you guys pay attention, that's what the whole community wants us to do. Don't just cater to developers. Now it's 0% for developers, because we're shooting from the hip and feel sorry for Western Welcome. Like, that's not, like, we're kind of peeing to keep ourselves warm. Like, let's help that situation and fix that, and not just, oh, zero for everybody. No, I, it's $200,000. We, we go through this every couple, every year, and we, we have a policy, we've adjusted it, because it costs the city a lot of money to go through this every three years. So we've kind of changed this. And now we're going through the same discussion again, because, oh, it's only 200,000. We don't even know where that 200,000 is going to come from, but then I just, ah, it's only 200,000. People don't like seeing us say that thing. I don't know. I just, so I, I'm okay with the, the fees to Parks and Rec, the families, if it's a smaller amount, it is, I'm okay with that. But fees all across the board, airport fees, the hangar fees, the paying their share and market value and things going up. And this is a system we've done over the last seven years that I've been on council. So yes, I am 100%. We need to do something. We cannot just kick the, the can down the road. Let's sit down and talk with them and find out why that is. Let's fix those things. But let's, please, let's be responsible and not just say no to zero, and then not know where all the money comes from. So I'm okay with the, with the, the Park, Parks and Recs fees, but other than that, I think we have to be responsible, and we can't just kick the, the can down the road just because it looks good for everybody in the audience. So.
Are you good with nonprofit banner?
Yes, and I think that also goes into, you know, like, so Western Welcome. You guys are, I, I don't mean to be, you guys are also very lucky to have the aquatic center on those lists, and that's, that's also the, the special credit, like, you guys have been here forever. You guys get that renewal, and you get that. And so the fees, things do go up, I get that, and I feel bad for that. Maybe we can help you with that. I'd love to help you guys with that, offset some of that, too. But you're also very lucky, because you guys are on that list. And there's a lot of people that really want to be on that list. So, and like I said, if the banners also go to zero, your availability is of banners for nonprofits, now that we've talked about it for the last hour. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of nonprofits that are going to want their banner up there, too. And, okay, it does cost to get a truck out there with a boom and get that guy up there, and, you know, those kind of services. So I am, I'm okay with the, with the 50%. And I kind of wish we had something like this, so we can help out some of those nonprofits when they do those things. I know Rotary and the, like, Western Welcome does that. They, they raise money and then give it to these other organizations, so they can do good things. So maybe that's something as a non-government side, we can still continue to do, maybe start a fund, do something like that. But I think the hardest part of us being up here is we have to make a rule that fits every single person out there. The good players, bad players protects us, and that's kind of the hard thing, is lighten it for you guys, because you guys are awesome, and then somebody else uses your, your credit, and they get to come in and not clean stuff, you know? So, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Dolan.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
No, on the CPI at this point. Yes, on the increases for the service and products, the items that you have here, S7, S704 through 706, yes to all of that. Yes, to S116 through S285. Getting rid of community center events, facility fee, get rid of the, I mean, the banner aquatics that are just, those need, not get rid of them, they need to be addressed. I'm kind of confused by them. Installation of petroleum gas tank residential, yes. This is not an enterprise fund. Fees are taxes. And I can sit back and say, where did all the VLT money go? If we want to get dollar-for-dollar, that's your vehicle license tax. That'll get swept in the general fund. And then again, we have money going from the CVB and the PED that are going into the general fund. So to sit here and say, oh, we're all going broke here, and where's that money going to come from? It seems that we're kind of fluid here in the general fund. We're kind of doing things. So I do want to listen. I want to have more conversations on how we can help the nonprofits, 100%. How do we manage all that? Not really sure. But I understand the time and energy and what you do for our community is huge. So other, the other questions?
So no CPI across the board. You don't want it for, you, you want no CPI for development services, no CPI at all. So just the fees stay the same?
Yes, at this ti, I want them to share this up in a couple of years, and really dig deep into these conversations that we had just now. And just assuming that fees are just absolute enterprise funds, dollar-for-dollar, that's really hard to do, because all of this community center is all tax dollars. Even grant funding that paid for our water meters, that's all your tax dollars. We pay a lot of money in taxes, and it's not one big, perfect enterprise fund. Wouldn't it be great if it was, though? If every dollar of your taxes actually went where you thought they were going to go, that would be fantastic. So at this point, I'm not as, not, I haven't been here as long as everybody else up here. I've never seen this drastic, where we couldn't come up with the $200,000 this year. I'm, that's my direction. So is there any other, okay, we have others, please note the following changes to the master fee. That's the court enhancement fees. All of those, yes. Whatever they had there, because we're talking about two different things. We have these new fees that are popping up and changes to our fee system. That has nothing to do with the CPI. And then we're talking about the CPI. So I am always going to be for offering Parks and Rec services for our children. Yes, it's going to cost us some money somewhere. And what I'm seeing, since I've been up here five years, I see where money is being spent, where I don't think it's as important as our children and our recreational fees. I don't. So this is not my statement to make a comment, because you guys are all in the audience. I'm listening to everybody, and I do nonprofit stuff all the time, because for community, just for free, because I think it's the right thing to do. I take my tax dollars and I donate to them, because it's the right thing to do. And that's the beautiful thing about nonprofit 501(c)s, that allows us to put the tax dollars where we want it, for sure. But yeah, my children, the children in this community are the future. And as for, we're talking a little bit of money, I mean, it's too, too, I mean, they were asking, do we have the numbers? I did get the numbers from the accountant today on basically what our fees were. I mean, Jill, today. So I'm not just pulling numbers out of the sky. These are numbers that I received today from, I just wanted to know, what is that number, how big is that CPI anyways? 5% is a lot, especially year after year. But I, I think that we've had a code in place, and I think maybe it's time to really dig into it, because the way we were five years ago, before we had the, the cap, the change, we were really super tight on money. Right now, I think we're doing pretty good, and I think that the taxpayers and the community is doing great. And I think if we can help them out any which way, that's fine with me.
Thank you. Yeah, and actually, our citizens are really fortunate these aren't enterprise funds, because if we did a Parks and Rec enterprise fund, everyone would be paying a whole lot more money, because it would literally have to pay for itself in a nonprofit system. So again, this is cost recovery. This is not revenue to, to try and make money or pay for other things. The general fund is like your checking account at home. It's, it's not, it's not general that everything just falls into it. Like, it all has a, a name for it, it all has a place for it, it all has a revenue source. Go to our website, our, our team, led by Jill, and, and her team, win awards for their financial reporting, and you can see all of, of this information. So to bring it to consensus, I agree that we should do a CPI increase. We have had those impacts where we don't do a CPI, CPI increase, and then we get a lot of issues when we, we do it. The nonprofit banner at 50%, I, I am, I'm happy to do that. And then when it comes to the Parks and Rec fees, I would be fine waiving those this year for, and not having a CPI, CPI increase, but we would not have consensus if we did that. I would need one other person to agree that they would want to waive the increase to the leisure and recreation services. Otherwise, that would not be consensus, and that would not come back on final adoption for our discussion. Do we have anyone that is willing to, to do that, or not? If not, it just doesn't come back with that and be a CPI, CPI increase?
Yeah, I, I feel like you're looking at me, Cal.
Nope. There's, there's three others, too. They have the opportunity to say.
I'll, I'll just say this, because, like, you know, it's being positioned, oh, we don't care about the kids. Absolutely, I care about the kids. I, my daughter's playing soccer on a field right now that is dirt, because we don't, we, we don't have enough fields, and we're not recovering enough money to build more fields for them right now. Well, potentially we are, because it's in the, in the, in the budget down the road. But you see where we're getting here? Like, our aquatic center is bursting at the seams. Jim mentioned it earlier, that, that there's lots of people who would love to have those meeting rooms, and they can't, because you're there. So we need to charge for it, and what it's worth, and what it costs to do, so that we have the money to make improvements, so that other people have a chance to enjoy so many of these beautiful assets. So I'll, I'll budge on this for consensus for right now, but I just, I want to, like, bring some clarity to what we're really talking about. It, it's frustrating how things get portrayed sometimes, but there's no revenue. We're just trying to provide services to people.
Thank you, Councilmember Moses. Vice Mary Lynn?
I have a question, and it, I don't, not necessarily in regards to this, but I do understand that there are costs to the recovery, the Parks and Rec department. I also do know that we've started a lot of branding programs down there, which I'm excited for, but I've also seen what the fees are for some of these things. Some are like $3, $5. So I'm sure those rooms are being used for some of those, that maybe could be used for the bigger events. I don't know that. I don't know that. I'm just saying, some of those events are probably costing us more to put on than what we're bringing in. I also am not going to ask that today. So I think we need to look at that. Also, that we are bringing things on. We're not there to generate money, but we aren't there to spend more money to bring things to the community either. But the one question I do have on the, the sponsored swim, when we talk about recovery cost, why would there be a different recovery cost if a business or a commercial is paying for it for 1,300, and nonprofit is paying 626 dollars? Why is there, why is there that much of a recovery difference?
Yeah, so the actual cost is the commercial side. It's this council decided to give the nonprofit a break. So we're subsidizing the difference.
Okay.
Through, through the general fund.
So you're, you're telling me there's an actual cost on top of the 1,357 for that couple hours swim, there's more of a cost to do that?
Yes, there is, Mayor. Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we, Mr. Knutson, do you have?
I was waiting for this question. I, I think we, Mayor, Council, I think we got it. We'll come back with some, in a way, to present it to council to make some good decisions.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion before we take the vote? All right, we are ready to vote. Again, this is the introduction. This is not, the final adoption will be at our next meeting, so, and that's where we'll take into account this feedback that we just gave.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Olson, and thank you, Ms. Mazak, for all of the work that you did. Thank you. All right, item 7.5 is resolution number 25-3878, adopting the 2025 Wash Management Plan. Good evening, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm back here. We were here last fall, and actually approved the preparation of the Wash Management Plan for the city. Let's see. Just a little background. We were here, like I said, last fall. On the right of the slide there is the 2015. We like. the two thousand fifteen. We liken it to the Dibble report. We've nicknamed it. Dibble and Associates did the engineering for it. And there below that is a list of the priority washes that they outlined for our risk management and floodplain protections. That, that program was in two thousand fifteen is when it started. We are now ten years after and have spent considerably more, I think it's closer to twenty million dollars, actually, in final costs over the last ten years. We are now finishing under construction, Kiowa Drain Three at the bottom of the list, and Have a Soup by Wash Six is going under design, just to give you an idea where we're at. So we need to look forward on a sustainable wash program. Right now, the allocations from the Mojave County Flood Control District are about three to three point two million per year is what we get. And we pretty much try and average that out every year in our C I P for the next ten, next five years in the C I P. So in two thousand fifteen, we did the engineering analysis and recommendations, initiated, identified the top ten washes. And from two thousand sixteen, we entered into the program. Tonight, I've brought Zach Schmidt with us. He's our consultant we hired last December to prepare the wash management plan. And I'd like to introduce Zach and his outline of our new wash management plan for adoption by Council tonight.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for having me here tonight. I'm Zach Schmidt. I work for Kimley Horn. We're a civil engineering consulting firm. I've been with Kimley Horn for eighteen years, doing, focusing on surface water, hydrology, hydraulics, flood control, anything you name, anything you want to call it, to deal with stormwater. So at the same time, I've been helping you all for the entirety of my career. I'm going to, I'm going to go backwards. That two thousand eight original drainage master plan, I was a part of that way back when I moved to Arizona. So I have a lot of background on all these steps that the city has gone through with their wash stabilization program. And Mike mentioned some of this background. And real quickly, a lot of the stuff that was done ten years ago kind of set the stage for where we're at today. Ten years ago, the, the city identified over two hundred reaches and ranked basically which ones we need to take care of first. And so between then and now, we've gone through ten. And so what we've done, and now taking the next steps forward, we're basically looking at the next ten to fifteen and figuring out what our best plan is. So my presentation today is basically where we're at and how the master plan looks today. So before I get started, ultimately, the purpose and the goals of what we're doing is we need to update a lot of the data that was collected from ten years ago with all the updated information that we have now with new topographic mapping, all sorts of different, and obviously, these washes change over time. So, and then we look at the hydraulic analysis of all the, the new prioritized washes. And then ultimately, we're looking to develop a plan to implement some of these alternatives to protect these washes moving forward. And then Mike mentioned, you all have done an excellent job of optimizing some of the Mojave County flood control funding in the last ten years. And so we'll be looking to utilize, continue to utilize those funds in these next ten to fifteen wash reaches. So the goals of the management plan, ultimately, what we want to do is establish long-term financial sustainability with laying out what we want to do with these washes and when we're going to do that with this flood control funding that we've talked about. And ultimately, what the goal is, when we walk away, when these are completed, is we need to mitigate a lot of the, the risk associated with these existing washes meandering. There's a lot of these washes sitting right next to residential homes that these homes are at risk if the washes are meandering too far. And then the other component is, you know, obviously reducing maintenance costs and improving the way the public work staff handles these washes. And what that ultimately does is lowers cities' long-term costs with some of these implementations. So just a few pictures of some of the projects that the city has completed in the last few years. This is Avalon Drain Two. We designed several drop structures to help control the wash through this reach. The other one is Have a Soup by Wash closer to the, to the lake. There's a before picture on the left, and then a after picture on the right, where we've added substantial bank protection and grid control structures for future scour and wash, meandering. So like I said, we are, we're working through revisiting all the previously ranked washes from the, like, we, that you all finished the first top ten. And so we looked at the next top fif, the next fifteen with public work staff and the engineering division. And then we incorporated a lot of the stuff that's been done in the last ten, ten to fifteen years. There's new modeling that was funded by FEMA that we were able to capitalize for your city. And then ultimately, using some of the public work staff, what are they seeing when they need, are out there and dealing with these washes? And then the next step we took with the next ten to fifteen washes is we had a drone imagery, go out there and fly, low fly, fly real low through the washes so that we can identify those real scour prone areas that have a lot of risk towards meandering outside of the public right of way. So I'm not going to get into the nerdy engineering things, but I was going to walk you through an example of one of the washes that we are working through. And this is Kiowa Drain Six up in the northern parts of the city. So we've identified some significant bank protection and bank scour that is starting to meander onto private property. All of these washes that we're talking about are all on city public right of way. And so now we're seeing some of this stuff meandering onto private property. And then the, the picture on the right is our drone photo that kind of confirms what we're, what we're, what we're seeing in an aerial view. And some of those banks that we're talking about, that's a wall of dirt that's twenty, could be twenty feet high. So with this data in hand, we move forward with hydraulic modeling. And again, I'm not going to get super into the hydraulics. But basically, what you're seeing here is red is not good and what is creating the, the scour and the scour walls that we showed here. So this is the existing conditions, a bit more uncontrolled. And if you look the upstream or the right side of the screen, there's a lot more red. And once you get downstream, it's a different condition. So our goal is to make this more uniform and stable. So we looked at two different alternatives. The first one is utilizing drop structures, slow everything down, and in a more controlled atmosphere. And then the next one was a bank protection where we know what we're dealing with from velocities and things like that. So we'll use bank protection, whether that's riprap or soil cement or something along that line. So after we worked through all these proposed alternatives, we then looked at what these are going to cost each one of these alternatives for each wash. And the good thing is, we were able to capitalize on all of the work that you have been doing in the last ten years on what is this going to cost, or what are some unit prices for executing this work. So we have a really good handle of what it's going to cost as we move through the program. So for this example, we have two different alternatives. Obviously, you can see that each one of these, the drop structure alternative is nine hundred sixty thousand right now, and then the bank, bank protection is one point three. And I, I know it's not always about cost, but that is a lot of the driving factors. But we need to consider utilities and maintenance and things like that. But moving forward, we're looking to identify each wash's preferred alternative, and then move forward with an implementation plan. But we also understand that five years down the road, things may change, supplies, construction, equipment, things like that may be different. So there's some flexibility in some of these alternatives as we move forward. And some of the things that we showed earlier with the, the alternatives identified ten years ago changed. The recommended alternative changed by the time we got to the final design. So this is just a simple table we have in the management plan right now, where each wash has at least one alternative. Should note, some of these washes don't really have another alternative just because of constraints with grades and right of way and things like that. So we've identified at least one with a maximum of two alternatives for each wash, and then put costs to each one of them. And we're working through identifying the preferred alternatives for each one of these moving forward. And then our next steps with the management plan is implementing, implementing this with you all. If you go back and look at some of those older reports, there's lots of discussion about implementing this and how it's going to be layer into your C I P plan that you all are working through. And we're, we're working on this right now and incorporating this into your C I P plan beginning fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. So that's where we're at. We have a management plan at the moment right now that has all of the nerdy engineering things associated with it, and the cost breakdowns and things like that. So that is what I have to present on. So if you all have any questions, or if Mike has anything to add.
I would, Mayor and Council?
Please.
I just wanted to add, we've taken next steps on a very preliminary basis with Finance, who has recently had a call for projects and implementation in the C I P upcoming. That'll be, you will be seeing those spreadsheets. And we've outlined a sustainable program for the next five years to utilize the flood control fund and not draw down, so to speak, on any of the reserves over the next five years. Those preliminary layout, so to speak, has been delivered to Finance just for the beginnings of their new C I P's budgeting season. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. It's kind of a, for Council, it's a, it's a peek behind the curtain. We've already started our budget process for, for next year, right? And so what Mike, Mr. Wolf is referring to is that we're looking at the wash, this plan here, and look at the available dollars over the next five years, and then trying to find a way to make sure that we have program projects each year that allows us to have a cash flow to accomplish these, these projects. But Mr. Wolf is, is talking about all the hard work and effort that goes, takes place in October. And we're going to present that to the Council for the first time in like February, leading into April with the, with the work session. So thank you, Mr. Wolf, that it just, with highlighting all the work the staff does now, leading into these conversations coming up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Wolf. You must be proud of the work that you've done if you've been able to stay with us this long. It's, for those of us that have lived here a long time, like, you used to have to think your way home during rain events or storm events, you know, in the seventies, eighties, nineties, even into the two thousands. Now you can pretty much get home in a rain event. There's still some areas, but you can at least get home without having to go an alternative route. And that's really, that's the, the work that you're doing that we see on the roads. But truly, you're doing it upstream in the wash area to, to take care of and prevent that from happening. So thank you for that. Are there questions or comments from members of the Council?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I have a question or concern. It came to me about three years ago, and I guess it's happened a couple of times, or constituent came to me, where Pima wash goes through Rotary Park, and where, because it's really undermined there. Like, if you fall in that, you aren't getting out unless you're walking out. It's that, as you said, some of these are real bad. And I had looked into, had talked to some people about some grant funding and stuff in regards to parks and safety. And they were saying, you know, I'm in the commercial or in the design business as well. They, they do say that in certain commercial areas, you should have a certain railing to avoid. The little boy, obvious, one of the, one of the situations, little boy was just riding, learning how to ride his bike, fell in that and was injured pretty badly. And dad couldn't even get him out, like, he had to go around because of the danger of that. Is there, and then again, we've, I had the, the wash right behind Main Street, the downtown commons. When I walked up to that and looked down on that, I thought, okay, now you're going to have people after an event at dark wandering all around that area. I know, I just feel if it's already happened, I'm not saying on all these washes, obviously, behind residential, I'm not saying that. But where we have a lot of public foot traffic, has this ever been a concern for you? And again, thank you for all your work you do on these. I absolutely love watching them and seeing what you guys do.
I'd like to address that. Councilmember Campbell, safety is our number one concern, and that's primarily why we're doing the program. You bring up a good point regarding that Pima stretch between an area where we're actually congregating public, and that needs to be looked at. The, the public safety aspect of people falling or entering into a dangerous zone in that area, that's not a reach that we necessarily have identified for flood control and wash management. But wash safety is, is a concern. That is something we can take a look at.
I appreciate that, because I know I brought it up a couple of years back. But I'm just going to throw this out there, because my father-in-law brought it to me, and I think everybody up here has heard this before. He has been in the dirt business his whole entire life. And he's always said that Pima wash, that's right behind now the Main Street Commons, if that was actually one big culvert, it would make for a great parking area for all of downtown. Now, again, this has nothing to do with this, but it's your vision. You've been doing this for years. Is this an unrealistic, just because he's been a dirt guy, doesn't mean he really knows what you do. So what was your opinion?
Well, that, that spot isn't exactly where we were looking. But what I would say is, if there are issues in a certain spot, like, the community should be identifying those with the city staff. And that is where these types of plans really take a lot, get a lot of momentum, is when the community is saying, hey, this doesn't work, this is a safety problem. That's where we can implement and start planning out five years from now or whatever. So I don't know the intricacies of exactly the elevations and those sorts of things. But there's a lot of great things that engineers can do and figure out a safe solution.
Right.
And what I would say is, again, the community should be identifying these areas where it's a problem. And then that's, that's where we can find potential funding partners, things like that, that we, look, that, we can find those types of things. And there is some sort of planning that has to happen. And the one, the last thing I'll say is, you brought some of these safe, like, a lot of the designs and things that we have to do in these washes, we need to consider the safety part. There's handrails on a lot of those drops. There's things that we have to do. In some spots, again, I would encourage the community to voice where they see this, and then we can take action, if that makes sense.
I appreciate that. And that's why I'm just putting it on record at this point, because I have been kind of messaging it. But I didn't see it anywhere on any of this book. So obviously, now you, now I've messaged it to you.
That's fair.
As a community member, okay? So just.
And just, just, the, the way that we, you know, like I mentioned, the, the city split all of the washes up. There's bunches of reaches. There's lots of different named washes, as you all are aware. There's over two hundred reaches. When I'm talking about a reach, it's a thousand or two thousand feet, right? And so what, what happened was, when this was all broken up ten years ago, they ranked it with all of these hydraulic and things that were noticed in the field with scour and safety concerns. And so then the next ten or ten, fifteen of them that we looked at, we've reviewed that with the city and looked at the drone footage, what we're seeing from a hydraulics perspective, and said, this is what, these ones need to be, these were already high ranked, and we just confirmed that they need to be looked at. But at the same time, if there's specific spots that should be looked at, then I would highly, we can do that. We can look at it. And I would just highly recommend continuing to use your voice with those spots.
And one multimillion dollar question that I get from constituents on a regular basis. Why don't we take all the washes in town and make them a green belt and make it so that people can ride their bikes safely? And now, back to the dirt experience that I have and the, you know, that kind of stuff, that seems like a big ask. And then one big wash, it's all destroyed. That's just my opinion. You're the expert. What do you have to say?
Well, that's, that's a great question. You all have a, you, you mentioned it, Mayor mentioned it earlier, you all have a unique town with the, the way that the runoff is coming off of the mountains. And you all developed around these washes. And they're doing their thing. And sometimes you have to let them do their thing. And some, some of the green belts and the, the, all those sorts of things, I've seen some of the washes running. I, I'm not sure you want green belts in that, in that, when it's running. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know if that's safe either, if that makes sense.
It totally makes sense. And now, when anybody asks me, I'm going to say, the expert told me that's not a good idea, all right? Thank you much.
Yeah. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the Council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Yeah, please, just make your, Mr. Schmidt, if you could make some room here.
My name is Peggy Casada, and I live on Indian Peak, and I have the wash behind my house. And I want to know, if you're going to do all of this, what happens to all the hours? And I want to know, if you're going to do all of this, what happens to all the owl habitats that are back there? And the fact that you have trapped the owls and taken them out, I'm hoping they come back. I want the owls there, and it just sends me that the city has become Palm Springs. Everything has to be modernized. Why can't we, I know we have flood problems, but let's leave it. I'm losing my road runners, my quails didn't have babies this year, my bunnies are gone, and that big mound of asphalt that's back there, I found out the Lake Havasu owns that land, there's, I've called everybody. But the asphalt, if it rains hard enough, the water will take the oil from the asphalt, and it will go down into the Wash and down into the lake, and it will ruin lots of wildlife. I'm just so opposed of it. I'm only one person, I sent my spiel, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Peggy. Peggy, before you leave tonight, Peggy, before you leave tonight, yeah, please, maybe Mr. Kellitt or Mr. Young, if you could connect up with Peggy and talk, you and I spoke about this as well.
Yes.
So let's make sure you can connect up, and we'll get some of those answers for you. We have the experts here tonight.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion, any additional discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number 25-3878, adopting the 2025 Wash Management Plan.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Item 7.6 is a bid for the Police Department Facility Rear Parking Lot Rehab and Expansion Project at Pioneer Earthmovers.
Recuse.
Councilmember Campbell is recusing herself from this item, and we'll welcome Mr. Cummings to the dais.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this project is a much-needed project. It's been in the works for quite a while, and it wasn't until recently we were able to do something. It's the Police Department PD Facilities Rear Parking Lot Rehab and Expansion Project. So I have three pictures here to show you. The first top left is the rear parking lot currently, wall. So this is where this will be expanded out. The park is kind of to the left of this or in front. And we'll connect a new wall that will look just like this, CMU wall, and create about 5,000 square feet of space. This will be filled and paved, and this will become an evidence area for the police to conduct their work. To your left is the current condition of the asphalt. If I were to zoom in, it's lived its life, it's, 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 this parking lot was put in when PD built this facility. So it's time to, to remove and replace this parking lot. And then lastly, to your bottom left, I just want to show you this shade canopy structure, so you can see where the vehicles are parked and how, how close they are to the, to the actual shade structure. So in this case, what we'd like to do is pour concrete under that, and long-term, it's going to last a lot longer than the asphalt. And in, in the future, if we end up having to do this again, we won't have to go back in there again. It's virtually impossible to get a paver milling machine, dump trucks underneath there. So this is a aerial view that I wanted to show you, and what you'll find here is that all the pavement sections have been identified to remove and replace, including the entrances and exits on this area. The gray area is where the concrete's going to be placed underneath the four shade structures. And to your far-left side is where the expansion is for the secured parking for the investigation vehicles. There'll be, there'll be a 20-foot gate that goes in right there, and part of the, part of that is to have electronic gate assembly with a key card accessible for the PD to be able to use. So I kind of covered the asphalt, perimeter wall, new lighting. So there'll be three new lights in the, in the rear parking lot of the expansion with cameras. New curbing is on the right side, and it's where the entrance and exit is. The current condition is really bad, so we'd rather just replace it before we pave. And lastly, we talked about the shade structures and how close they are. So pouring concrete's going to be the best, best situation for that. Engineer's estimate total was 719,032. That includes, includes, excuse me, the added alternate one. Low bid came in at 529,361.30, Pioneer Earthmovers. And then adding the added alternate, which is the electronic gate assembly, key card access, came in at 544,361.30. Schedule is approximately 120 days or four months. And if this project is awarded tonight, the anticipated completion is April of 2026. And with that, I'll take any questions? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Cummings on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Please just make way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name's Emiliano Torres, I'm a resident. This has been a very interesting meeting. We have been talking about banners for charities and charging them. We've been talking about dirt soccer fields for the children and not having the money to do that. And yet now we're wanting to spend at least $500,000 for a parking lot that, as far as I know, doesn't look that bad. We have 550, we're talking about $50 for a fee for a banner, possible $200,000 increase for, for fees. We have 501(c)(3), I think that's the term, for organizations that give back to the city, and we want to charge them for what they do for us. So we're providing a blank check for a parking lot that none of us ever see, that, I don't, I mean, the parking, the picture wasn't that bad, and it was only one picture. I mean, the guy with the, the individual with the buses at least told us the doors don't open, and they're broken, and he can't get them fixed. I mean, can the cars not park in these parking lots? I mean, I mean, they're not perfect, but again, you're driving at parking lot speed. So $500,000, when you take into account all these other things you've been talking about just tonight, with all this finance that seems so tight, and we're going to pay $500,000 for a parking lot, it, there seems to be a disconnect, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Torres.
Thank you.
I just want to remind you, it's also parking lot expansion. So it's, it's new concrete, new parking lot for a 35-year-old parking lot and expansion.
Why park on the dirt?
Yeah, those are your taxpayer dollars that paid for the police vehicles and cruisers and.
Again, they're driving at 5, 10 miles an hour in a parking lot. I mean, they're not racing down that street, it's a parking lot.
We appreciate your comments, just wanted to make sure you clarify that. Thank you. Would, would anyone else like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion?
Vice Mayor Lynn?
I move to award the base bid plus additive alternative number one for the Police Department Facility Rear Parking Lot Rehab and Expansion Project to Pioneer Earthmovers Inc. in the amount of $544,361.30.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lynn, and a second from Councilmember Diaz. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries with six councilmembers voting aye and one councilmember recusing.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, our next item is item 7.7, which is bid for the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Filter Upgrade Project to Schofield Civil Construction LLC. Good evening, Mr. Hart.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's good to be here before you tonight. I'm here to present a recommendation of award of this Island Wastewater Treatment Filter Upgrade Project. Just for familiarization, the tertiary filter that we're talking about, existing sand filter, is located out on the island in the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant, as this arrow is, is showing. The existing tertiary filter is in need of repair. The pictures you're seeing here, the upper left is actually some evaluation that was done on the structure, the chipping away of the concrete to figure out what was bad and what would need, need to be replaced. And then the replaced, the traveling bridge system that you see here on the lower right. So this project consists of the construction of concrete wall repairs, the removal and installation of a new traveling bridge system with related mechanical and electrical equipment, new handrails, new grading, and affluent wire plate replacements, and installation of new electrical power disconnects, panels with related conduit and wiring. So in general, our filter system is experiencing age fatigue, and we're needing to do this rehabilitation. The project is scheduled to take six months. We anticipate should the council award tonight, starting in December of 2025, with anticipated completion there in June of 2026. The construction budget was 1.4 million, the engineer's estimate was 1,565. The responsible, we had three bids, with the responsible low bid being Schofield Civil Construction at 1,353,500. My recommendation is to award this construction contract to Schofield Civil Construction in the amount of 1,353,500. And I can take questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Hart on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion. Motion. We have a, Councilmember Diaz?
All right, I, I recommend, yes, here it is. Make a motion to move forward with the total bid for the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Filter Upgrade Project to Schofield Civil Construction LLC in the amount of 1,353,500.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Diaz and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion?
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, and our final public hearing of the evening is cooperative purchase for implementation of an integrated business solution program with Genuine Auto Parts, DBA Napa Auto Parts. Good evening, Mr. Young.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This has been about eight months in coming. When this idea was first approached to me, I kind of stiff-armed it, and my fleet supervisor brought it back and said, we need to look at this. And so I did. Then it began to look too good, and I started getting doubts about that. So we called Mike Bacardi, the Division, West Division.
Western Division Manager.
Of Napa IBS, and we asked to go see Glendale Facility. And basically what this does is move Napa into our fleet. They carry the overhead. Their ability to reach and buy parts for us at lower prices increases by about 20%. We save on our aftermarket parts through them. They handle the procurement. And what I was sticking on for a bit was, well, what about of all our specialty parts, our fire truck parts and all that? They work with all of our vendors. They handle all the procurement for those vendors. It takes away work from our procurement, from our finance, most of all importantly to me, from my fleet technicians that spend time on the phone trying to get the specialty parts they need to repair a lot of our vehicles. So I come to you tonight to ask to make this agreement so that we can merge with this integrated business and move forward with allowing Napa to come in and do what we should have done a long time ago. They've got over 440 municipalities that they work with, and more regarding airports. They set up shop in airports, and there's not another company that does this. Our procurement reached out to over 73 vendors, not one of them matched what they do. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, and I'll be more than happy to allow you to speak to Mike, who is happy to answer anything you got.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there questions or comments from members of the council for Mr. Young?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
And I understand your reluctance, but I appreciate the efficiency this is going to give us. But, but I understand your reluctance, but, because I could potentially have some of those same feelings, but, but I trust you, and this just means you can't ever retire.
Thank you all, but I can't guarantee that.
He's already got a replacement. There's a guy back there in a, in a hat, you know, country hat, so he's probably his replacement.
I'm working it up, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Young on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for a motion or any additional discussion.
Mayor motion?
Yeah, please, Councilmember Moses.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase for participation in the Napa Integrated Business Solutions Program under the terms and pricing available through the Sourcewell Contract 090624-GPC with Genuine Auto Parts, DBA Napa Auto Parts, in the amount of estimated of $900,000 per year for inventory parts and for inventory management estimated at $125,000 per year, not to exceed the amount available in the annual budget, and authorize the city manager to execute the participating addendum on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item eight on our agenda is the call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. You will have three minutes for your comments. There will be indicator box on the screens around the room. We can't have a two-way conversation during this portion of the meeting, because we don't know what is on the, because it's not on the agenda, but we can listen intently to your comments. You don't have to sign up to speak a call to the public, but we did have two speakers do so, so we'll start with them, and then we'll open up to anyone else that would like to address the council call to the public. So we'll start with Mr. Paul Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm a 30-year-plus citizen resident of Lake Havasu, and I'm here tonight to talk about the Wheeler Park. There are two locations at Wheeler Park across the road. They are designed to allow wheelchairs to cross. There however, is no crossing painted on the ground. And if you're coming up Lake McCulloch and you cross Capri, there's a little bit of a blind corner there. And I saw an instance where somebody was walking, they weren't in a wheelchair, and the cars were going probably more than the speed limit and almost hit the individual. the cars were going probably more than the speed limit and almost hit the individual. I think they were supposed to be ADA compliant crossings to get to Wheeler Park, but if you look for yourselves, I don't believe they are. And I know we have something coming up November 5th and maybe we can get some crossings and some signage there before then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And then the next speaker that signed up is Mr. Fenton.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. My name is Ted Fenton. As you all know, or may not know, October 18th, about 200 of us civic-minded Havasuvians gathered to celebrate our First Amendment right to assembly. It was part of a larger national No Kings protest, which drew over 7 million nationwide. The event was to protest the authoritarian tactics of our current president, including deploying military troops to the streets of our cities, suspending due process, using the DOJ to indict political opponents, usurping the power of the purse from Congress, threatening by lawsuit to silence the free press, universities and other institutions, among other things. Our protest was first and foremost intended to be safe and peaceful. And it was, for the most part, outside of a small issue, but we had two trained peacekeepers there who were neutral and they helped quell the little problem, as well as the police department. We had police on hand, too. Grateful for them. So we all know free speech has its limitations. You can't yell "fire" in a theater or so forth. Well, there is a fine line between intimidation and free speech. Intimidation can be defined as intentional attempt to put another person in fear is generally unlawful. There is also something called the chilling effect on free speech. The chilling effect on free speech is the indirect suppression of protected speech caused by fear of government or social repercussions, or in this case bodily harm. And while it is generally legal to carry firearms at a protest in Arizona, the law draws a firm line at intimidation. Carrying or displaying a weapon in a way that causes reasonable fear can result in felony charges and pointing a firearm at somebody is considered aggravated assault in a non-defense situation. So I just want to get your idea of.
Mr. Fenton, you are addressing the council, please.
I'm sorry. So this is what was pointed at us all day long, well, all morning long, throughout the protest. So I'd just like to ask our city leaders if you think this is. Sorry, I need the notes. Is this perceived as free speech? I understand, you know, the Second Amendment and Arizona laws allow guns, but, and I understand this is a prop too, but the point is, we had several people, several people walk away when they saw this because they didn't know if it was real or not. Okay? So I'm asking the city leaders, at a peaceful protest, is the blatant display like this of intimidation, real or not? Could it be perceived as a real threat? Does it not erode our free expression? I'm just putting that out there for y'all, all right? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes, citizens that signed up, so anyone else that would like to address city council during call to public, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Me again. I just want to let you know that Western Welcome will pay the $51 to put the banner up, okay? Just to let you know that, we are willing to do that.
Thank you.
Pam's all about our money. I'm Willie Jogomire and I am the second vice president of Western Welcome Club of Arizona. And I'm the one who has to make all the arrangements for our, whatever we have going on that's going to bring money back into the club. And over the past few weeks, it has been very difficult dealing with the aquatic center and figuring out all the new fees, what we were supposed to pay when and all this. We had our buncle on Monday and on Thursday, they called me and said, are you still doing your buncle? Your fees haven't been paid. And I went, well, I made these arrangements last year and at that time, when we had the event, they billed us and the next day or two, we brought in a check and took care of it. We were not notified that that had changed or anything had happened. So this was on Thursday. I personally went down to the aquatic center and paid for it myself and it was. Yeah, well, it was more than that, it was 600 and some odd dollars. And I was informed at that time that I also, with that 600, it was supposed to be 286. That wouldn't have been a problem. But at that time, she said, you have to pay the $400 for this cleanup fee or whatever it is. And I asked them, okay, do we get it back? What happens with it? And she said, well, we roll it over to your next event. Okay. Then I got home and Friday morning, they called me and said, oh, we're really sorry, but did you want setup? There's a fee for that, it's $126. And I said, we're a bunch of old women. Yes, we need setup. It was really a difficult thing. And if they had notified us ahead of time, we could have worked it out. And paying the fees down there is not what the problem is. It's the miscommunication and the increase in the fees for a nonprofit that does everything on their own, that has no money coming in from any other organizations, that makes it more difficult. We have to work around that or we have to find another place. And then that presents a problem because we do big events and we need a big space. So we may have to find another convention center. We may have to go and talk to the mayor about what, that's a feasible place. We may have to go to some other facility where we're finding that are not big enough. But it's just, it was just the miscommunications with everything going on, the community center and with our club. So I appreciate you. I know it's a lot of work that you guys do and we do appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I really appreciate Mr. Smith for bringing up the crosswalk issue because I know that our city has issues with crosswalks all over it, not just at Wheeler Park. And also last night, I went to the Parks and Rec department meeting. That was a great meeting and I learned a lot of things. And they discussed social media issues. Just want to recommend using social media as a way to communicate with people when you're saying. Well, what was said last night was sometimes the onions get more acknowledged, but I realize the reason that is, is because on Facebook, when you post something, people will listen. You get heard in a way that you don't get heard when you're actually trying to discuss an issue with someone in person sometimes. And then you get the people who decide to confirm your negativity, which sometimes is a bad thing. Also, again, on the Wheeler Park thing, I just want to say, I was a little bit disappointed when I read the press release regarding the Christmas tree. Mr. Federico's Christmas tree that has been called a Christmas tree for the last 45 years. And you're going to be cutting it down and in your press release, you call it a holiday tree. Up on today's city's manager report, you call it a holiday tree. The holiday that it has been celebrating for the last 46 years, 45 years, was Christmas. And when I read the press release, I realized something about the word holiday and happy holidays, the term. And I think political correctness has made us lazy because you don't call the event to celebrate Hanukkah, a holiday candle lighting ceremony, you call it Hanukkah and that we're lighting the menorah. And if any other religious people that live in Lake Havasu, I would hope that if they asked for an event to be celebrated, that you would honor that and call it what the event is. But political correctness and calling things happy holidays has really made us lazy and actually kind of not respectful to people with other religious beliefs because why not call their holidays exactly what they are? And you want to celebrate Kwanzaa? Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, Happy Halloween, all of it. So I just want to say that when it comes to November 5th, I hope that when you read your story about Mr. Federico, that you will call it the Christmas tree because that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during call to the public?
Mayor Shee, council members. Holiday tree, really? Wow, who approved that? You proud of yourself? I came up here to talk about something else tonight that you may be aware of or may not be aware of, but as I was reading an article regarding the Sedona Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of the Heritage Lodge Project, a large, a group of citizens appealed the commission's decision to the city council, claiming that it did not conform to the requirements of the Sedona Community Plan. That made me kind of interested in the state statutes and what the requirements are. So that state statute, Article 9-462.01, line F, reads, "All zoning and rezoning ordinances or regulations adopted under this article shall be consistent with and conform to the adopted general plan of the municipality. In the case of uncertainty in construing or applying, the conformity of any part of a proposed rezoning ordinance to be adopted general plan of the municipality, the ordinance shall be construed in a manner that will further the implementation of and not be contrary to the goals, policies and applicable elements of the general plan. A rezoning ordinance conforms with the land use element of the general plan if it proposes land uses densities, intensities within the range of the identified uses, densities and intensities of the land use element of the general plan." I couldn't help but wonder if the Arizona State Statute applying to zoning changes made to our general plan may be contrary to the goals, policies and applicable elements of our proposed land use element of our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, you get just one opportunity, a call to the public. Yeah, thank you all. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing or the call to public, excuse me. Move on to item nine, which is our current council committee reports. Do we have any council committee reports?
I do, Mayor, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
As Ms. Toy indicated earlier, we had a very robust conversation last night at the Parks and Rec Board. So I invite all of you to watch it. We had some good conversation. One of the, one of which was about social media and how do we get the word out there? And we all, we thought of some cool ideas of how to disseminate the information better and to make sure all of our board members are aware of what's going on and can be our ambassadors out in the community. So great talks there and I think we can make an impact because there was a conversation about one of our Parks and Rec programs, one of our after-school programs, where it's the Hunger Games to try and get your kids signed up for it. But that's just not the case anymore. We've added to our resources and created those situations. So no more Hunger Games parents, bring your kids back and enjoy the services. So great conversation. We also talked a little bit about meeting frequencies. In the past, we haven't had things to talk about, both because we don't send, give them anything to talk about, but they don't put anything on the agenda much either. So we talked and then sometimes we get in trouble and we're talking about things we shouldn't be talking about. And I got to be, do my best impersonation of Ms. Kelly Gary and tell everybody about the open meeting laws. But so we talked about, you know, what is the most efficient use of our time so that staff can do their job, but also get feedback and all that things. And so one of the things the board recommended of going to in every other month situation, that's their suggestion, that's what we voted on last night. And so, but again, great conversations and I invite you to take a look at that. One of the other things that we talked about, we had a great presentation from some of the, some of parents come and talk about some of the needs within our parks. And there was a, there was a video, they did a great job putting a video together. So I was hoping you guys would indulge me and just let me play this video for you. It's a few minutes. We cut it down so that it's not the full 10, if we're respecting your time, but is it okay if we play that right now? Thank you.
Show you my family navigating the parks that are supposed to be adaptive. So I'm going to show you Joshua going down into the ramp to go play with his brothers and sisters.
Steve, a little higher with the volume, please.
And at this point, I can't push him any further. This is a battle. As a mom who does this on a normal basis, this is hard to push him through the chips that are here. So basically now, there is not much that he can do and there's really nothing he can do independently. So he can sit here and watch his sister and his brother, but that's about it. All right, so now I'm getting Joshua out of his chair. All right, come on, buddy, hi. Joshua's five years old. And almost 40 pounds. So this is pretty much the only thing that I can set him in. And here I can place him in the chair, but at no point. I'm Esther and I'm here to show you my family navigating the parks that are supposed to be adaptive. So I'm going to show you Joshua going down into the ramp to go play with his brother. The chips that are here. So basically now, there is not much that he can do and there's really nothing he can do independently. So he can sit here and watch his sister and his brother, but that's about it. All right, so now I'm getting Joshua out of his chair. All right, come on, buddy, hi. Joshua's five years old. And almost 40 pounds. So this is pretty much the only thing that I can set him in. And here I can place him in the chair, but at no point can I let go of him. This is definitely dangerous. It's way too far off the ground. I know that there are other models that are lower to the ground and easier and more stability for him to sit in. So as you can see, this is fun. This is for him to do, but I have to sit behind him. I have to make sure he's safe and I go around with him. Hi, guys. We're going to go over to the swings now, but I'm going to show you guys, it's really, really important for this uneven ground to be even, regardless if it's a wheelchair or if it's a child that has balance issues or is just learning how to walk, somebody's going to fall. This is not safe. This is not safe for our adaptive kids. I can't even get him on the sidewalk. This is not possible. You want to help me? Hi, I'm Esther, and I'm here to show you my family navigating the parks that are supposed to be adaptive. So I'm going to show you Joshua...
And thank you, you know, sorry for hijacking your time here, but they put a lot of work into this, and there's a lot of things that I realized. I just wanted to make sure, do a presentation with you guys here so you know what's going on at the Parks and Rec Board at the last meeting. I know there's some, I know staff got inspired about some simple things that they can do on just a staff end. But then also, just to put some ideas in our head, the main issues that, and it's a much longer presentation when you watch it, but I'll summarize it. The main issues are the tire millings or the wood chips just being impossible, and they have to get real close because sometimes it can, you know, he's, what'd she say, eight? But sometimes 12, 13, 14-year-old kids that they have to lift up onto these things. So they have to get real close. And then the other issue is, so he, this particular little boy, has two or a few other brothers and sisters who are also, you know, on the spectrum, and some of them like to run. And so there's no fencing around this park. So she's caring for this child while some of the other kids could potentially run into the roadway. It's, you know, apropos that there's a car right behind it, too. That's not planned. But just some fencing, some of the flooring, and then, I mean, there's other ideas. And they're actually being very respectful and just wanting to bring some awareness to some issues that we could potentially easily solve. Some things not so potentially easy, but just to have, when we're making decisions about what our parks look like down the road, remember some of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Moses. Are there any other council committee reports? Vice Mayor Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, from the PED, our next First Friday event is scheduled for November 7th, on Friday. There is going to be live music, local art exhibits, vendor booths, pop-up restaurants, food trucks, kids' activities, and crafts.
Thank you. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, item 10, our future meetings. On Tuesday, November 11th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m., that meeting will be canceled, that is Veterans Day, but we do invite you to the Veterans Day Parade down McCulloch and participate in some of the festivities on Veterans Day. And then on Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m., we'll have a regular meeting. Item 11, are there any future discussion items? Yeah, Councilmember Diaz?
Yeah, I'd like to get a discussion item, and we could probably work with police chief also and Kelly, just, we have an uptick recently on graffiti and gang-type graffiti. So just, citizens want to kind of know what we're doing about it and, you know, how we have a task force, or how do we address it and get it removed and that type of thing. So really basic discussion on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for future discussion about graffiti. Mr. Knutson, do you have the information you need for that?
Yeah, yes, for sure, thank you. It'll be, it's multi-departmental, and it's not just PD, but it's multi-departmental. We'll figure out a way to approach that and provide good information to the council and the public.
Excellent, yeah, thank you. All right, item 12, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind, and we'll see you next time.